I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reverend Jeff Tiples from Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church. Hi.
Hi. Good evening and thank you for having me here tonight. 2020 has been quite a year so far. It started out with this 2020 being a year of great vision, right? 2020 like perfect eyesight and it's the 50th anniversary of our town. And we had great plans, all gears running straight ahead. And then something called COVID-19 happened. It's like an iron bar shoved into a machine and it's messed everything up. So I just wanted to give you one little bit of humor, a little bit of perspective and a prayer tonight. If a couple of things, things that come around from the internet, I like, like the dumbest thing I ever purchased with a 2020 planner. And then this one, if I'd only known in March, it would have been the last time in a restaurant, I would have ordered dessert. And then this one, when does season two of 2020 start? I do not like season one. And then also a little bit of perspective. Robert Burns wrote a poem in 1786 called "A Mouse." It tells of how he, while plowing a field, upturned a mouse's nest. The poem is his apology to the mouse. This is in a more modern English translation. "But mousy, you aren't alone. Improving foresight may be vain; the best-laid schemes of mice and men often go awry, and leave us not but grief and pain for promised joy." John Steinbeck titled his classic of Mice and Men after this poem. So when everything goes awry, what are we to do? As Dory in Finding Nemo says, just keep swimming. The book of Proverbs, written by Solomon, who is said to be the wisest king to ever live, said this in Proverbs 16:9, "In their hearts humans plan their course, but the Lord establishes their steps." Or, "We can make our plans, but the Lord determines our steps." So I end today with a prayer for you, our town leaders, to make best decisions and wise decisions to lead our community. Even though plans will go awry, the ability to pivot and hold us together and grow together for our special town where we live, Fountain Hills. Would you all please pray with me? Lord, thank you that you are over all. We thank you that you are the one that gives wisdom to our leaders and we thank you that you will do so. Lord, guide them tonight and in their roles as leaders in our community to make good decisions, to listen, to lead and to serve in the best of their ability. Thank you that even though things have gone very upset and very different in this year, we know that you are the one that will help us and we pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, a roll call, please. Mayor Dickie here. Vice Mayor Sharno.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine. Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you. Our first item, our reports by mayor, council members and the town manager. Councilmembers, do you have anything to report? Councilman, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick, Valley Metro had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'm on that board, but I just had an update on ridership surrounding COVID. Of course, ridership is down generally 40% on the buses and 55% on the light rail. But they had some other numbers from some other metro cities, so it wasn't as bad. If you look around the country, the BART system over in San Francisco had a 90 to 95% reduction at one point. MTA in New York City was down 80 to 90%. And there was similar numbers around some of the other metro regions too. So things are picking up a little bit in that area. Construction still continues on some extensions. And there's another meeting this Thursday as well. And the only other item I want to announce is Make a Difference Day is going to be happening. It's going to be set for Saturday, October 24th. It's always been a big event, a big gathering at Golden Eagle Park and then dispersed to a lot of different homes around the community and parks and that type of thing. We're not going to have that big gathering, but we're still going to meet at the various projects. And so urge all citizens and nonprofits and churches and other groups to get involved. Go online on our town website to sign up. So encourage everyone to do that and still be a good event and help out some of the less fortunate in our community who can't always do everything they need to do around their properties. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to report? Councilman?
Thank you. I just would like to touch upon the fact that if we could keep law enforcement in our thoughts and prayers, we had a U.S. Marshal shot this morning in Phoenix. And of course, a couple of days ago, the two California deputies who were the attempted assassination, I'd like to just keep them in our thoughts and our prayers. Also, on a good note, that I heard that the chamber is pressing forward with the art fair that will take place in November. So I think it's a good sign that the town is going to start opening back up and we're going to get things back on track because we've been closed for too long. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I think recognition to many of the veterans organizations, Town Mafia, a number of locals that put together a 9/11 memorial at Fountain Park. That was very well done. It was very well attended and it was something we should do on an annual basis. So I just want to recognize them and their efforts and thank them from the town.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to go ahead of Grady tonight. As part of the 50th anniversary effort that's centering around the Fountain Park, we were considering refinishing and painting those utility boxes for Make a Difference Day. We were talking about doing that, but it ended up being a pretty big job. So I reached out to SRP and they've already been in. They already fixed all the boxes down at the fountain. And I want to thank Linda Brady and SRP for accommodating us so quickly. It was really a quick turnaround. Speaking of the 50th, there's a brief update here. If you've looked outside, look at the banners. Check those out on the avenue. There's a fountain photo contest that began yesterday. So already been a good response, so please do so. All our information, I'll give the website for that. Some of the events, you were just mentioning the Chamber Fair, but others like the Stroll and the Glow and our celebratory dinner for the 50th anniversary are still to be determined. If you want to buy merchandise, go to Bogro Productions. That's local. Chocofin has Fountain at 50 chocolate bars and they have a contest going to win 50 pounds of chocolate. We are going to have a presentation on October 20th by Sandy Ursini, who is the project administrator. I want to thank Alan and Brent Crookshank and Rachel, our staff person, for being co-chairs for the 50th anniversary. And they'll be back at that meeting. All of the information you can find is at ours, fhaaz.gov/salvrate. Every year, we announce that September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month and we encourage regular health checkups for our citizens. The MAG Regional Council meeting did a report on the Prop 400 extension, which is now called Momentum. Fountain Hills has more than a dozen projects submitted and we're watching that closely. Arizona is falling behind on the census. So please, please, fill out the online survey as soon as possible. The deadline is, I think, the end of this month. That's www.2020census.gov. The Mayor's Youth Council, we had our virtual first meeting and then we had a second meeting, which was to get to know your council. I want to thank Cade and Linda and all of the motivated students who came. Alan was able to come and it was a really great meeting that we had right here and I look forward to some good things coming from those students. I hope that some of these council members had been able to attend some of the league conference. Usually it's a great gathering in Tucson or someplace and have a lot of fun. And we look forward to doing that next year live. We did pass the resolutions that you guys gave me the go-ahead on, but they did not adopt the bylaw that shortened the term of office for the executive committee. Surveys again, please fill out the active transportation plan and the visioning surveys that are out there. Check our website for the links. The Greater Phoenix Economic Council Mayor Supervisors Meeting was very informative. They talked about COVID and our region's future. There's a lot to work on together, but basically we are seeing some good signs in some sectors. And last, our Canada-Arizona Business Council met as well. There's a lot of unity there, a lot of good feelings for moving forward. And it was kind of neat because there were a lot of people there when they mentioned Fountain Hills in their presentations and how we have a lot of great possibilities here. So I will now go to Grady, who's going to give us a report and introduce some of our new staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council and for the public who are here tonight, I'm very pleased to introduce three new staff members. These folks, just want to let you know, while this pandemic situation's been going on, every vacancy we look at to determine if there are, if these are core positions that need to be filled in order to deliver core services in the community, without exception, these positions that are before you tonight were. They're also exceptional people, as I'm going to be introducing you individually to these folks. The first person, if I can have Amanda come up. Amanda Street is our Economic Development and Tourist Specialist. She was hired on July 27th. She holds a master's degree from ASU and an undergraduate degree from University of Indiana. She worked for the Greater Phoenix Economic Council in Market Research for three years. Most recently, we were able to hire her from a Midwestern consulting firm where she was responsible for the development and execution of economic development plans for cities and towns and clients for the consulting firm. Amanda, did you have any words you'd like to say?
Sure. I'm just, you know, I'm really excited to be working for the town of Fountain Hills. I think so far, it's been an interesting experience starting a new job during all of this, but I've been so thankful for staff support and everything has gone great so far and really excited to get back in the business of promoting town of Fountain Hills. So thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amanda.
Welcome.
The next person I want to introduce you is Community Relations Manager Bo Larson. He was hired August 31st. Bo, if you can come up, please. Bo has 20-plus years of experience in communications and public affairs and public relations, including seven years as a Public Relations Director for Banner Thunderbird, five years of experience as Public Information Director for a large Arizona municipality, and several years of experience in marketing and business development for a Phoenix nonprofit organization. Very fortunate to have Bo. In fact, he's already hit the road and running. We have our next issue of Fountain Hills Insider, which I just saw the first draft of it. And he is also helping trying to get the general plan out, the information to the public so they're fully aware of it. So when come time the election in November on the ballot, our residents will be fully informed about the general plan. Bo, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Thank you, Grady. And thank you very much. It's a wonderful opportunity for a fantastic town that I've known about for 32 years. My wife wants to move here, but we have to pay for our house off first before we do. But it's a fantastic community and I'm looking forward to sharing the good stories and raising the profile. So thank you.
Thank you. Very happy to have you.
Thank you, Bo. The next person is Steve Bartlett. Steve, if you can come up. Steve is our Facility Supervisor. He started working on September 3rd. He has 30 years plus experience in facilities maintenance and management for Sonoma County. He came out here and he's actually a resident of Fountain Hills. While in Sonoma County, managed a wide variety of facilities ranging from historic libraries to large prisons. We're not going to bring in the prisons here, though, so you don't need to worry about that. He holds numerous professional certifications in facilities management field and he's been a resident here for the last few years. Steve, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, thank you, Grady, for that introduction. And I just want to say that I feel truly blessed to have landed here in Fountain Hills. I moved here with my wife and I brought my parents as well. And we've been here for a couple of years and have been able to see the town before COVID and just, we just love the place. It's just been, it's been very exciting and it's very exciting to be able to come to work and meet everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
So much. Anything else to report, Grady?
That's all I have for reports tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you. So next is a proclamation that I have, and I was wondering, is Ms. Byrne here from the DAR? No? Okay. I'm just going to read it then from up here and then we'll make sure we get that to them. She is the Regent for the Four Peaks Chapter of the DAR. And it says that, "Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it's fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Jenny Dickie, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the frames of the Constitution that they had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained." Thank you. Thank you so much. So I'm going to move up. Before we start our presentations, we're going to go to item 8A, which is the appointment of our new councilperson. But before that, we're going to express our appreciation to Sherri LaCron and her wonderful service to us here. And I think that Councilman Brown's going to join me and will come down and say a few words and then we'll go on with the swearing in. Before we start, I was going to ask if any councilpeople would like to say something before we give the pin. Enthusiastically, David Spelitch.
Where do I start, Sherri? My fellow Chicagoan, my fellow member in law enforcement, thank you very much for all that you have brought to the council. Thanks for, I guess, the lighthearted moments that you and I've had. We haven't agreed on everything, but you're an excellent councilmember. More importantly, congratulations on your new position with the State's Attorney's Office. And for those that don't know, ex-councilmember LaCron heads the unit for the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, which prosecutes people for batteries to law enforcement and first responders. So it's a big job. It's the first time, I think, in the country that there's been a dedicated unit that will do nothing but go after people who batter law enforcement and first responders. So thank you for doing that and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Sherri, it's been just a delight to get to know you. Passed almost last two years and sit up here with you. And even though you are a Bears fan, I'll have to let that go, I guess. But yeah, you know, thank you for your dedication and service to our town and to this council. And I think I was more in agreement with you than David was on many things, probably 99% of the time. And I always appreciated your comments and your insights and your questions. And I liked the way you slapped down the crowd at the daybreak meeting. You know, that was awesome, but maybe they needed to show any more respect to us. But anyway, I just appreciate your candor and your intelligence up here and thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Sherri, you did a great job. I was very happy when you accepted the opportunity to be appointed onto the council. And I agree with David and I agree with Mike that it's been a pleasure to work with you. The members of the public don't always see what happens behind closed doors and you always brought a lot of knowledge and a lot of important experience to the discussion. So I will miss that and good luck in your new position, which I think is incredible. And I hope you prosecute as many as possible if they are involved in any aspect of brutality against our police force. So good luck.
Not yet. First, I'm going to say, of course, that I will miss you. Her logical, legal mind, her presence. We'll miss you so much as a colleague. Look forward to seeing what comes next for you. Councilman Brown will probably say a few words. He wants to give you the beautiful pin that Sammy makes for our outgoing councilpeople. And then you have the floor, young lady.
So, Councilwoman, I just have to say that I'm the lucky one because I got to serve three years on planning and zoning before you came to the council. And of all of the councilpeople and planning and zoning people that I've worked with, you always walk through the door three minutes before the meeting starts and you're better prepared than anybody to answer the questions and calmly explain to the crowd how things are going to be. And I truly mean that from my heart. You just always bring such solid statements and explanations to the public. And you've served Fountain Hills so, so many years and I thank you for that. Have you seen these?
I have.
And a nice little pin from Sammy.
Oh, wow. Oh, it's beautiful.
Isn't it nice?
And I made it just for you.
Wow, did they?
Show the crowd.
Yeah.
It's Fountain Pin Gold with a little diamond in it.
Oh, I love it.
And the past councilpeople have these.
Gorgeous.
She has clearly earned it.
I think I'm giving this to you.
That's right, Zike?
Yeah.
We have little holes in our jackets, so we get to put that through?
Need help?
All the help I can get. A lobotomy.
Is that making it easy for you?
You did. Oh, that's beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Wow. Well, that is definitely touching and I will put my mask back on here so I can speak with all of you. But, you know, when I joined the council, I was filling some very large shoes, those of Cecil Yates. And yes, I had been on the planning and zoning, but this is a much bigger step, right? And I have, seriously, I do not say this lightly, this has been a privilege and an honor to serve two years. I think it's exactly two years that I've served in this position. And it's been a privilege and honor to serve this town, especially to serve with each and every one of you. Seriously, this is from my heart. But I have a lot of thank yous to say. I'll try to make it brief. But the relationships that I have formed with all of you, I will always cherish. And, you know, we don't do this alone. We do this as a team. So each and every one of you and the residents, the town staff members, everyone, all together, when we work together, we make this town work. But I do want to start with thanking the town staff members for all that you do to sustain this town's unique nature. It takes each and every one of you. I wanted to say thank you to our town attorney, Erin, for your wisdom, your solid counsel on very important issues. I mean, you've been a rock for me on many occasions. I wanted to say thank you to the town manager and to all the directors that you manage, that work for the town, for the thorough assistance that they gave me on the times that I did have questions and issues. I mean, they jumped right to it. That's been consistent throughout. And I know they do that for everyone else, too. But I want to say thank you to them. I want to say thank you to our town guardians. Thank you, Captain Kratzner. Thank you, Chief Ott. And for all of your team members, because they work so hard to keep us and members of the town, residents of the town, safe on a daily basis. And that's especially important these days. You know, I tell my friends or people that haven't had this experience that one of the beauties of this process, and this will be the thing that I will talk about for a long time, is when we, when we, well, this is a thing I've learned, when we share different opinions up here and we respect each other's differing opinions and do it in a professional way, more often than not, surprisingly, we reach the right decision. And that I have learned. I have learned from each of you and your differing opinions. Really, seriously, I would sit here and listen to something that I wouldn't necessarily agree with and I learned, it helped me too, to have a better decision during my decision-making. Now, we didn't always agree, but I did respect those differing opinions. I will always think of fondly this experience that I've had. I will think of this town and all of the residents and all that it offers forever fondly, whether I'm standing in its midst or not. But I want to thank each one of you. Elizabeth, you consistently amaze me. All the things you do behind the scenes and what you do every night that we gather here. I mean, I don't even know how you do it. I remember those hour-long meetings, hours long, and you're taking notes. I don't know how you do it. Thank you for that. Councilman Spelitch, how can I match what you said about me? But the one thing I wrote down, which I wanted to touch on for sure, is thank you for your sense of humor. I mean, seriously, at times when I didn't want to giggle up there, but you bring that to this group and you bring that to this town and we all need that. And I really do appreciate that about you. And thank you, Councilman Magazine. I hope, even though you're not here, that someone tells you this because as soon as I was appointed, he reached out to me and wanted to meet with me. Now, we pretty much knew we probably weren't going to be on the same side often, but he was a gentleman from the first moment I met him and throughout the entire time that I worked here. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember Magazine. Mayor, thank you so much for allowing me, even though oftentimes we didn't agree, for allowing me respectfully to share my differing views and opinions. You were very patient and very open about allowing that. I really do appreciate that because many people in your position might not be that way. And I really do appreciate that. Thank you. Councilman Tolles, I want to say thank you to you for sharing your ideas. I mean, seriously, sometimes you've got a vision and you would share the vision and others didn't quite see it, but I appreciate that you shared that. And you also were very, you often would share both sides of an issue. And I appreciated that coming out of, you kind of summarize both sides of issues very often. And thank you for doing that. That helped me make my decision often in a better way. Councilman Sharno, thank you very much for your support and for your partnership, especially in the mutual idea for this town to hopefully have an educational summit in the future. I really appreciate your support for that. And Councilman Brown, yes, we served together before in the planning and zoning. You reached out to me and said, hey, are you interested in this? I'm so glad you did. And you have been a good friend, but also what I want to say thank you to you for is your wise input up here. You share your experience and your wisdom from not only your outside of the council experiences and experiences in life, but from all the years that you've been doing this, and I really appreciate that. You know, I have so much more to say, which I'm not going to say it, but it's hard to do this without wanting to kind of tear up, but wow, I'll never forget this, never, ever. And like I said, a privilege and an honor to serve with each and every one of you, seriously. Best of wish, good luck to you guys. I wish you the best. Thank you.
So like I said, we were going to move up the item 8A, which is consideration of an appointment to fill vacancy on the Fountain Hills Town Council. I'm going to ask Erin to talk a little bit about process, and then I'll take, if there's any speaker cards, and then we'll take a motion. Erin?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to address the council. Councilwoman LaCron, thank you for your kind words. Unfortunately, I have the sad duty to share what state law is when there's a vacancy in the council. Pursuant to state statute, whenever a member of the town council ceases to reside within the town during the member's term of office, the council seat is deemed vacant. And so the council must fill that vacancy by appointment for the remainder of the unexpired term. And that's the purpose of the council having this agenda item here tonight. The process, as we've decided here tonight, would be for the council to be able to have any discussion, take any action related to that appointment this evening. So Mayor, I'll return it to you.
Thank you, Erin. If, are there any speaker cards on this? Okay. Then we'd like to move ahead for a motion, if somebody would like to make a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman?
It would be my honor to make a motion to appoint Jerry Friddell to the vacant council's seat.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Erin. Great selection. I, too, would select Jerry Friddell. He, for the very reason that he received more popular votes than the other two candidates, you know, we could put the names in a hat, or we could draw straws, we could do it lots and lots of ways, but the way I read it was that the person that received the most votes in the primary would be the one that we should probably ask to join this council. And so I, too, second that appointment.
Thank you. Third and fourth. Well, we had, you know, different options that we could do, and this was definitely not unprecedented. It was something that had happened even when I started. And it's very logical, and I'm very pleased that we are moving ahead. So what we're going to do is we will have Judge Milton do the swearing-in, and then we'll have a brief recess so we can kind of combobulate ourselves, and then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. So if the judge is here, and if Jerry is here, we can get started.
Mayor, just like...
Excuse me?
You need to call for the vote.
Oh, well, what do you know? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The motion passes. So Grady, what do we do? Just get started right here?
So Judge Milton is here tonight.
Welcome, Judge.
And if Mr. Friddell can come down, Councilmember-elect Friddell will be known as councilmember shortly after this. We're going to have the oath of office administered by the judge. And I believe the judge, you have the oath with you, so we should be all set.
I'll give that to you. They need to hear you, not me. Okay. Take a deep breath.
Yes. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
Defend them against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties...
Of the office of councilmember.
Of the office of councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We'll take a brief recess, and we'll be back. We'll get started again, please. We have a presentation, an update by Republic Services. Are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I already saw you. Sorry about that.
So, Mayor and Council, and the public who's here tonight, we're going to have Stephen Herring, who is the Government Relations Director for Republic Services. He's going to give us a brief update on residential commercial service during the pandemic. And also, we had to stop the bulk pickup in the spring, and so he's going to tell us a little bit more about that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Herring.
Great. Thank you, Grady. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Hi.
As Grady mentioned, my name's Stephen Herring. I'm the Municipal Relationship Manager for Republic Services. So a few housekeeping items before we dive into the COVID-19 update. Grady mentioned that we are resuming bulk. If you recall, when COVID-19 first started, we did suspend bulk services for the free bulk period. We are resuming in October. So if you're in Zone 6 through 9, you will still get your free bulk pickup. They'll be weekly on Wednesday, starting in October, and they will be done early November. So we do have an updated schedule that will be distributed on social media, and I will be getting in contact with Fountain Hills Times as well to distribute that information. The other piece that I do want to touch on, it hasn't been too relevant lately, but I wanted to just make sure I say it every time I get a chance. We have not trashed any recyclables. All recyclable material is being properly disposed of at a recycling facility. Specifically, the material from Fountain Hills is going to the City of Phoenix North Gateway Facility. The last piece of housekeeping that I'll touch on is we do have an upcoming household hazardous waste event. This is a great opportunity for residents to dispose of anything that doesn't belong in the trash, like any chemicals. Pool chemicals always come to mind. Those can be quite hazardous. Bug spray, I'm blanking on a few other ones, but...
Paint.
Yeah, paint is a great one, too. Stains, lacquers, seals. That will be November 7 at the Fountain Hills High School. Is that the, okay. Great. So now I'll dive into my presentation. What this is going to show is the actions that we've taken during this unprecedented time, how we kind of feel that things are going to go from here, and then show you some volume trends, and then I have some real information from Fountain Hills volume as well. So throughout this process, if you have a question, feel free to stop me, and I'll be sure to answer it. Yes, sir?
Are times on November 7? Time, what time?
Uh...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we're putting together the times, and we're still working with the high school on that. We will publish that internally and externally as well.
You're always in the morning. Okay.
Yeah. I think in years past, it was like 7 to 11.
Okay.
So somewhere around there.
Right.
No problem. Okay. So during this unprecedented time, the most important message that I can give to you is that we're committed to doing everything we can to make sure that we continue to service your trash and recyclables for you and your constituents, all the residents of Fountain Hills. We're working around the clock to ensure that we provide the safest possible service and do not put any unnecessary danger on our team that would prevent us from properly servicing your community. A few events over the past few years that you're probably aware of have been kind of the big shakeups in the trash and recycling industry. First was 2018. This was the China Sword event that caused the disruption in recyclables, changed economics forever on the value of recyclable material, which in turn changed all of our programs across the Phoenix Valley in the United States. The other shakeup has been this year, and it's COVID-19. This is unprecedented. It's something that we've never had to handle as a company. So as much as we'd like to say we had a perfect plan, we've been kind of playing it by ear and doing everything that we can to adapt as new information comes out. A few of the first things that you noticed was a suspension of bulk services. In some parts of the country where the outbreak was quite more intense than what it was here in Arizona, we did see things like suspension of recycling, and yard waste services were applicable, but that never did happen here in Arizona. Challenges and responses, I'm not going to read all of these, but just wanted to highlight a few things to really just showcase the effort that the company has been making to ensure safely providing these services. So 90% of our non-essential or non-frontline workforce is working from home. That's over 6,000 individuals, myself included. So I can't tell you how great it feels to be outside of my house giving this presentation right now. We, as most places, are actively encouraging anyone, if you're not feeling well, to stay home. We're providing employees that do get affected by this extra PTO, and we're covering all medical expenses, which is pretty cool to see. Across the board, we're enhancing our sanitizing protocols, everywhere from inside the office, any touch points like a time clock or a dispatch area where there's constant human interaction. We're deep cleaning and disinfecting our trucks. That's upon entry and exit of the vehicle, so if a driver were to share a vehicle with another driver, there's no contamination of that vehicle. And all these steps are just to ensure that we keep our people healthy, and so we can keep providing services. Another way that we've been supporting our customers is through an initiative called Committed to Serve. Republic Services donated $20 million to this initiative, and one of the main highlights of this was we provided $400 to each of our frontline employees. We have about 26,000 frontline employees nationwide. Each received $400 in Visa gift cards, with the caveat that they use those dollars in the communities that they live and work, specifically with local businesses and restaurants. It's really cool to really focus on keeping the businesses that need the dollars. We're getting some dollars from Republic Services. And additionally, we invested another $3 million across the country to help rebuild nonprofits and businesses. The money went to companies like Rebuilding Together, Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Works America. One of the main pieces of this pandemic that we've noticed from a trash hauling perspective is there's been a dramatic volume shift. So if you think about like a business or a restaurant, you now are at the beginning of this, maybe not so as much now, you would go to the restaurant, take your order, you'd take it home and eat it. Well, that trash isn't ending up in the dumpster at the restaurant anymore. It's ending up back at home. So we saw volumes increase as much as 30%, and this is across the country in the residential trash. And the other reasons were people are forced to remain at home, people aren't going to school or college, panic purchasing, couldn't find toilet paper for months. And then people were ordering more materials than ever online, and then tackling home improvement projects as well. So what this has done is it's slowed down our routes a little bit. I'm not sure if that's been noticeable in this community, but the trucks are filling up slightly faster, so that leads to slightly slower route times, longer route times, more disposal trips. So this is the new normal. These are the items that we are... These are the items that we are anticipating to stick around. We see that this could remain an issue for a longer period of time than most people are speculating. So, we are planning on these four things going forward, and these aren't the only four things. Just wanted to touch on them. The cleaning and sanitizing, the fleet and facilities, that's sticking around. Increased need for PPE, whether it's masks, gloves, or any other protective equipment. We are continuing to see higher volumes in the residential side. And then unfortunately, as a side effect of the hardships caused by COVID-19, we are seeing a higher result of bad debt or collections processes from the individually billed customers. Now, this is an interesting slide. So, I mentioned that there was a pretty large uptick. So, you can see for the past two years, we've remained pretty consistent on the amount of volume being collected from residential households. Well, look what happened in March 20 into April 20. Saw a massive uptick nationwide, is about 30%, give or take. And then while we've seen those volumes start to trail off, we see the elevated volume remaining through 2021. Here in Fountain Hills, on just the trash side of things, we saw about a 9% increase in trash volume. And on the recycling side of things, we saw over a 50% increase in volume. Now, this is the exact same slide as the last one, but it's next to the commercial slide, so I'll only speak to the commercial chart. That is the exact same trend. You see volume remains relatively consistent, and then all of a sudden, March and April, the volume decreased by over 30%. And while that started to come back again, we think that's going to stay decreased through the end of 2021. But we do think this is the new normal, to an extent. As the communities start to reopen, as we find vaccines and all of that, we should see some of these trends go back to normal, right? But for now, this is the reality we're dealing with. And with that, I will open it up to any questions for me.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions? Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that Republic has seen an increase in collections. What has Republic done with that issue specifically? Are there many town residents here in Fountain Hills who are struggling to pay their bills? And what's being done about it?
Okay, yeah, sure. So, specifically to Fountain Hills, I don't have that breakdown of information consistently in years past. That hasn't been much of an issue. So, I would venture to say that the numbers are about the same. If you'd like me to dive into it, I can a little bit more. But the process that we've adapted is we now have a COVID-19 policy. So, if you are experiencing hardships from COVID-19, you can contact our customer services, and we will work with you to find a payment plan that works for you to recoup the bad debt.
So, you're not discontinuing services?
I'll have to look specifically into certain situations, but not as a blanket statement, no. But we are working with our customers.
Okay. I just would like the residents, you know, to know that there is help out there. If they call you, they can work out a plan, and so...
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And this one might be more for Grady. You know, Stephen mentioned, you know, nationwide, their costs are increasing because of the higher volume and PPE and all the sanitizing and stuff. And, you know, we have kind of a longer-term contract. Maybe you could...
Sure.
I'm sure at some point in time, some of those costs are going to be have to pass on, but we're kind of protected here for a while.
That's a very good point, Vice Mayor. So, yes, we have a multi-year agreement that went into effect, I believe it was a year ago. And basically, we have a built-in multiplier that goes into effect each year, I believe is at 3...
3.5%.
3.5%. So, the good news is, I think during the duration of the contract, unless there's something astronomically, you know, that is causing some big issues that they're having a hardship, that they need to renegotiate something right now, I believe for our residents, we're pretty much locked in. And I think that that's a good thing, and I think we really negotiated a really good contract with what we have. So hopefully, things will get back to normal. I did want to mention, both the mayor and I are aware of this, and we've notified the council and the newspaper, through our relationship with the Tempe Action Center, they do have a CARES Act-funded utility assistance program that helps with rent, mortgage relief, and utilities. And so, we're in their service area, believe it or not. And then also through Maricopa County, we are a member of that organization's, the Community Development Agency runs a very similar program as well. So, we have actually made referrals when we hear from those folks. And the newspaper has posted several articles on that. So, the people, you know, trash collection is considered a utility, so this would be a covered benefit for people that might be in a hardship situation. So, I just wanted to bring that up.
Anything else? Thank you. Stephen, you're always so responsive. You know, we call on you when we hear from our folks, and they are always very focused on customer service, and we appreciate that very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation by our own Captain Crasser, Maricopa County Sheriff's Department. Hi, Captain.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of council. All right. So, on Friday, September 11th, I had the opportunity, along with some of the deputies from MCSO and Fire Department, to attend the 9/11 memorial that they had over at the Veterans Memorial at Fountain Park. And as Councilmember Tollis had stated, it was a good turnout, and it was a nice ceremony. It was... They did a moment of silence when the first plane hit the first tower, and just a very nice memorial and a ceremony. So, it was nice for those that put that on and put it together. So, I'm just going to give a couple of updates. The last update I had was several months ago, before we went on break for the summer. So, you know, my time's short, but I'll keep it to some of the things that I felt recently are more of the important topics we're dealing with. So, as the weather's getting nicer here in Arizona over the next six, eight months, we see a lot of people that are starting to come out more, or want to come to the state in vacation, or just be here. So, one of the issues we get with those is, the town of Fountain Hills doesn't have a lot of vacation or short-term rentals, but we have a few. If you go on Airbnb or the VRBO website, you can see the number of listings that they have in the town. Most of the time, if those homes are being used as it was designed for a vacation rental for a family, you know, there's no problem. It seems like it's a really good idea, and it seems like it's a way for those property owners to make extra income and serves a purpose for those people looking for a place to stay. Unfortunately, what we see sometimes are those homes being used for party or large -- parties or large events, and, you know, we'll see large gatherings there. We'll see a lot of noise disturbances. We get a lot of calls for that. So, a couple of years ago, I think we all remember, issue we had with one particular home here, and we had a lot of success in working with that over time. It took us a while. It was right as I was coming in, starting to be at the tail end of that. But over the weekend, we were having some additional calls, and we, over the past three weeks now, or the last month, we've been having a couple of other calls for other Airbnbs or vacation rentals. So, what I wanted to do was just talk about some of those issues that come along with that, and some of the information that's out there, or misinformation that some residents may have when it comes to those, and maybe what they can do if they have some issues with those vacation or short-term rentals. So, I think it's important for people... One of the big questions is, can't... Sorry, I want to go back. The town manager and MCSO, myself and Lieutenant Halverson, and some town staff met with a couple of neighbors for another house that was having some issues. It was an Airbnb vacation rental. And they were having a lot of noise issues. We kind of saw it coming. We would see, over the past three months, we saw quite a bit of noise disturbance calls out there. So finally, it got to the point where they were just fed up, and they asked to meet with MCSO and the town. And we met with them, and we were pretty successful over the last month in resolving that issue through a couple of creative ways. So, we're looking at ways to do that. When members of the town here have issues with a home in those areas, we're trying to find creative ways to help resolve those issues. But one of the questions that a lot of these neighbors had, and I've heard it before, too, is, can't the town or the city just prohibit the short-term rental or Airbnbs? And the answer to that, we've discussed this at two of the council retreats ago, so two years ago, the answer is no. We can't... The town can't make a law that prohibits them from being here in the town of Fountain Hills. So, that's one question some of those residents had. We answered that for them. But there are things that we can do, and of course, some of those things are enforcing some of those nuisance laws that are already on the books, whether it's a town ordinance, noise ordinance, or it's Arizona revised statute laws for disorderly conduct, or county noise disturbance, or the town noise ordinance, as well as those things that come with, you know, large gatherings and parties. You know, you get some of the littering, some of the loitering, some trespassing, minor consumption, curfew issues, and vehicles parked illegally. So, we encourage any resident that's having issue with, you know, noise, or not even just for a short-term or vacation rental, but in general, noise disturbances. A lot of times, it can get to the point where they get really fed up with it, and when they come to us or the town, there's not been a history of reports or calls for us. So, us knowing about it and allowing us to try to help, I know it can be frustrating at times because you want that resolved immediately, but the faster we know about it and the faster people report it, the easier it is for us to get involved and help resolve the matter. So, I just want to encourage residents, if they have issues with noise or some of these other issues with loud parties, to please call MCSO, the non-emergency line, obviously, unless it's an emergency. But some of the other nuances with that are, 99% of the time, people will call in for a noise disturbance, and they just want the noise to end. So, they're not asking for contact by the deputy. They're just asking the dispatcher to have a deputy come out and have the people turn down the noise. And probably about 90% of the time, that works, and there's no other issues that evening. Well, on these ones where it's different tenants or different renters each weekend, they've not had the warning. They may not understand that they're bothering other residents that live here, and this is their normal home, day in and day out. So, but with calling in, and we're asking residents, if it's an ongoing issue, to please ask the dispatcher. The dispatcher will always ask them if they want contact by a deputy, and they can do it by phone, if they're not comfortable with in-person contact, or they can do it by in-person means. And that's important because then we get to find out from them, what exactly is the issue. The dispatcher will try to get some detailed information, but that conversation with the deputy is usually they're able to obtain more that we need if we are going to end up charging somebody with disorderly conduct or a noise violation. And then the other part to that is, is we need that person to be willing to be a victim and to be willing to testify in court. So, a lot of times, without those two things, contact with the deputy, and then obviously being willing to be a victim and testify in court, if we were to cite that individual for noise disturbance or disorderly conduct, we're really kind of stuck in the mud. We can ask those people to turn the noise down. We can come out, you know, another time if they call. But if we're not having that victim that's willing to aid in the prosecution, our hands are a little bit tied. So, that's not on all the things. You know, if there's vehicles blocking fire hydrants, we don't need a victim on that. But definitely the noise issue. So, one of the other things that we found, Airbnb and VRBO is... has a mechanism for citizens to report many sort of issues to them. Airbnb, especially Airbnb, recently has come out with a list of things that they prohibit during this COVID-19 pandemic. And so, some of that is they've done a global party ban. So, any... They banned all parties worldwide for any of their listings, so not just here in, you know, Phoenix or US. It's all over. They've kept the occupancy at 16 guests, and they don't condone any gatherings of any size. And they say that they'll take action on any homeowner or parties that are taking place. So, the key to that is Airbnb does have a mechanism for a neighbor or someone to go in and make that complaint. So, we're encouraging people to do that, as well as work with law enforcement, just to find some ways that we can help them relieve the issue. So, and then some of the things that, when I talked about some misconceptions or misinformation out there, some of the things that law enforcement can't do when it comes to some of these issues. You know, some people, if there's a large gathering, that they can see there's a large number of people out there, or cars parked, if they're legally parked, there's not much MCSO can do. If it's a large gathering, and it's COVID-19 right now, where the executive order prohibits gatherings of 50 or more without the town or city's permit, that does allow us a mechanism to address it from that standpoint. But outside of this COVID restrictions of those gatherings by the governor, it could be 100 people, and if they're, you know, that alone is not a violation of the law of there being, you know, outside of, again, outside of COVID, there being 100, 150 people and a lot of cars down the road lining the roads. So, we're just trying to help educate people on those things that we can help take enforcement action on, and those things that we really can't. But anyways, a lot of times, there's other issues that come with that, blocking, like I said earlier, blocking fire hydrants, littering, curfew violations, loitering, trespassing. We see a lot of that with those party homes, just because they get so many people that are coming out there, and so many people, and they start to leave, kind of congregate. So, again, I just want to reiterate, if there is residents out there that are being impacted by homes that are short-term rentals or vacation rentals, and they're constantly having issues with noise or large gatherings, please call us and report that, and, you know, please be willing to speak to the deputy. And if it's to the point where, you know, you want enforcement action taken outside of just asking the person to quiet it down, please be willing to aid in the prosecution. That'll help us, help you resolve the matter. So, I'll end that part of the talk on short-term rentals, and I'll move over into political signs. So, this is an issue that just kind of came up recently. I know there's been political signs out here for a while, but it wasn't until recent that we had some issues with political signs being stolen or damaged. So, it's just, I want to take the time to remind anybody who's listening, residents out there, that, you know, it is a class-two misdemeanor to remove or damage or deface any of the political signs. There are mechanisms, if signs are placed in areas that aren't allowed by the town ordinance for those to be moved and relocated, but a person cannot take it on their own accord to remove those signs. So, if there's issues, or someone has a concern over a sign that may be blocking the visibility or in an area that a town ordinance doesn't allow, like the medians, or size issues, you know, there's a bunch of things in the ordinance that those political signs have to adhere to, they can call into. So, we work closely with code enforcement on those issues as well, to make sure that, you know, we are removing those, having those signs relocated if that's needed. So, due to time, I'll cut it short there, and if there's any questions or anything else about what's been going on for the last few months, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. Captain, any questions? Yes, Captain.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
You promoted me. I'm a captain now. Kappa, could we just... We all know, I'm sure the council members are all aware, that the numerous emails we got this weekend about what we're talking about, could we reach out to those homeowners and let them know, or have we let them know that Airbnb has a complaint policy and...
Yeah, we have not yet, but the town manager is working to get all of those neighbors that have emailed. We're trying to work with those neighbors to have a get-together where we can sit down. And I'm going to reiterate a lot of this information with them, and there's some avenues from the town perspective that can assist them as well. So, we are going to reach out to them and let them know. What we did last time, I myself had all the information for the other house that was having a bunch of issues, and we were able to go in there and do the complaint from an MCSO, the law enforcement standpoint. I don't know that it held any more weight or not, but they do ask for any sort of documentation that supports, including police reports or photos. So, we had a lot of that, and I was able to go on there. We did have some difficulty with the userability of that and getting it submitted, but on that one, the neighbors got ahead of us, and they did it, too. And they had good things to say about the level of investigation Airbnb did, and how they changed the posting, maybe owner changed the posting. And they believe, and I believe, that that really helped resolve the matter for them. So, we will reach out to them, and we will make sure they understand that. And in addition, maybe something we do, MCSO does, is reach out to Airbnb and put that complaint in, based on all the calls we had over the weekend.
I think it's hard for citizens to realize that police officer, as police officers, we... Our peace can't be breached. You know, we can't sign our own complaints as it relates to that. So, I think if you explain to a citizen, I called one of the residents who kind of ended the email with, "I'm sure you won't hear back from me," and just FYI, the quickest way to get me to return a phone call or anything is dare me not to call you, because I love that. So, I just informed them that, you know, well, why can't MCSO sign complaints? Well, our peace can't be breached. So, I think if we explain that to citizens and let them know that, they'll maybe be more conducive to, or come around to the fact that they can sign a complaint. more conducive to, or come around to the fact that they can sign a complaint and help things out better for you.
Yes, sir, I agree with that completely, and we've had, we've had really, that's been well-received by most of the neighbors or people that we speak to, they're willing to do that. A lot of times, they just didn't understand that, so great point that a lot of times they just don't know.
Yeah, thank you. The, you know, this began a few years ago, obviously, when the cities and towns lost the ability or the tools to be able to regulate short-term rentals. Sometimes if you have in your HOA, you know, you might be able to do that, but in general, cities and towns can't. The legislature tried to help it a little bit two years ago, which was, which allowed you all to come up with those noise ordinances and things like that, but now, last session, they were going to do it again, because I think it's like one of those unintended consequences, you know, it's like what you're talking about, making some extra money, and it had turned into something now that's particularly hitting towns like us in Paradise Valley and Sedona, Flagstaff, and so I'm anticipating that, hopefully, that this year, there may be something coming down the pipe that will help us a little bit with that, because our residents are suffering in their own homes, and we, and it's very frustrating to have to say, you know, well, it was a noise disturbance, or that kind of thing. So I think, I think there's a good understanding that this is a problem, and I look forward to being able to maybe nip it in the butt a little bit more next session. Any other questions for Captain? Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor.
Our next presentation is going to be by our own Economic Development Director. Grady, do you have anything?
I do, I'll be real quick. Mayor and Council, you recall back in June, our Economic Development Director presented to you a small business assistance program that was designed to help those that were impacted negatively by the pandemic, and the council, with its blessing back in June, we were able to create a grant assistance program. Mr. Smith, our Economic Development Director, is going to give you a brief presentation on this, pretty much provide the, some grant stats, and kind of tell you how that program went. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Great, thank you, Grady. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Grady mentioned, it's been exactly three months tonight since you approved the grant program with $300,000 from the CARES Fund. In mid to late June, staff finalized our program, completed an online process for businesses to apply. Late June to the present, we've been promoting the program, reaching out to businesses individually. You see, we went through the chamber, made sure that was, the program was publicized in their newsletters, social media, the website, and then the Times as well. On July 1st, we opened the application process. So to date, we have received about sixty-five applications that have been received, evaluated. To date, forty-five businesses have been committed to, so twenty-eight grants have been fully funded in the amount of $140,000. There's nine that are processed and will be paid this week for another $45,000, so that's $185,000 that will be fully funded by this week. There's another forty that are in process. So again, this is really kind of a team effort. In order to make sure that we were living up to the expectations of the gift clause of the state, we made sure that we entered into an agreement with every business with expectations of what they would use the money for, and so Aaron has been instrumental in reviewing all these agreements, and Liz, and Grady executing them, and David Pock's team making sure that these businesses get their funds. So really, it has been a team effort. So to date, as you can see, we've committed about $225,000. There's three more agreements that are out there that are expected to be approved and funded, so that's another $15,000, so that's $240,000. There's also eleven home-based businesses, we're still determining what the receipt will be, or how much each of those businesses will receive. So roughly $265,000 is committed to date. When you look at the types of businesses, restaurants and bars, and service industry, and retail are definitely leading the way, it's about two-thirds of the businesses are in those categories. Those forty-five businesses that we've committed to, they accounted for about 240 jobs pre-COVID. Right now, they're down to about 200 jobs, so each business, on average, has lost at least one employee. I know that the mayor, in particular, was concerned about this. Early on, Arizona was underrepresented in the Paycheck Protection Program. We were one of the five bottom states in terms of receiving funds in that area. We've asked the companies to report to us whether they have received those. So of the forty-five we've committed to, forty-two have reported, and about twenty-eight of them did receive some funding from the federal government. So we have, our businesses have received funding, in some cases, it's a very small amount, and one of the things that we kind of shifted gears after coming to you, was originally, we had intended not to allow businesses that had received PPP or the EIDL to apply for our program, which was consistent with a lot of the other cities and the county as well. What we found was that a lot of our businesses received a very small amount, four, six-hundred, four thousand, that wasn't going to sustain them, so we shifted gears and allowed these businesses to apply. It's interesting to note that the county has done the same in their Phase Two, so they are allowing those businesses to apply as well. So I just kind of want to give you guys an idea of, you know, what you approved is making a difference. So I won't read all of these comments, but I'll just kind of go through quickly. You know, some of the comments that we've received after businesses have found out that they've received funding or received their funding, and certainly can make these available to you if you're interested, but you see that they're, it's really making a difference for some of these businesses. With that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, James. Any questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I probably should know this, but is there a deadline yet, or is it open or closed?
So we had planned that the deadline would be either December 31st or when the funds ran out, and it looks like, we expect by the end of September, we're pretty much going to be out of funding.
I know this probably isn't fair to ask you, but some of the, you know, the second, the third relief, whatever, bill that has stalled, and also, there was quite a bit of funding that was still in the state of Arizona that had yet to be distributed. Do you have a status on anything about those, either of those two things?
I don't, Mayor, I can look into that.
Yeah, I think we're kind of in the same boat with that. If we should get something like that, then we could certainly look at some of this, extending some of this, or maybe some of the stuff that David was talking about with the, you know, people that are having trouble with the utilities, or that kind of thing, but at this point, I think that this has really been helpful, the sectors that you mentioned are, mirror what GPEG and what these other places tell us, who've been hit the hardest, and obviously has to do with, you know, our state also, and the kind of things that sustain us. So really, thank you for putting this together and implementing it and administering it so well. Any other questions at all, or comments? Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Our next item is just to do our consent agenda, and if anybody doesn't need to take anything off of there, I would take a motion.
Hold.
I'm sorry?
Miss Kip, hold.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Do we have any cards? Okay, thank you, thank you, Dennis. A motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to our regular agenda, we already did eight A, so we're going to eight B, and eight B and C are pretty related to each other. I'm going to open a hearing, we'll hear from our staff, and we'll talk about this and see where we go. Thank you. Grady, did you have anything to say?
I don't on this, but I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Wesley, who's going to introduce our senior planner, who'll come up and, or, no?
I've got this, he's got the next.
Oh, I apologize, okay. So Mr. Wesley's going to give the presentation on this.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, good to be with you again this evening and review this topic with you. What we are talking about on this item is to restore basically a zoning overlay district that we kind of thought we had in our zoning code. Just going back on a quick, brief history of the town, prior to incorporation with original development in kind of the downtown area, this area was platted as Platte 208. The area north of Avenue of the Fountains, from La Montana to Swarro to Palisades, north half of Platte 208, has that kind of unique development pattern, kind of an urban form with smaller lots and buildings covering the lots and the common parking area behind it. That area is zone C2, just like the Target Shopping Center is zone C2. The difference down here, is the way it got started initially in the county, was with those smaller lots and some variances that were allowing that development form to take place. When the town was incorporated, it was determined that we really need to address that through a formal type of zoning district, and that was done by creating this planned shopping plaza overlay district. So that was created in 1992, and then applied to this property, which then allowed, again, the zero lot lines and so forth that's in there. From what I can tell in my research of the records of the town, in 1993, when the town adopted its formal comprehensive zoning code, that overlay district was not included. I don't know why, but it was included. So all these years, that overlay district has not really been in our zoning ordinance. We've acted as if it was, we've continued to develop as if it was, but it's not there. And so as some development actions have come in this area, we haven't come to understand that we don't have that overlay, so we really can't continue to allow that type of building without re-adopting that overlay zone, and then going through a zoning process to, again, apply it to the land. So that's what we're about here tonight, is to establish that overlay district as Chapter 26 of the zoning ordinance today. And so because of that history, and how the town has developed with certain rules and regulations, my goal in creating this new chapter has been to continue as much as possible that same district as it was created originally in 92. It's also amended a little bit in 98, that was mostly to update it to the current format with a few minor changes. So that's what we have before us this evening in this Chapter 26. So I'm going to go quickly through each section of the code and talk about what's there and how we addressed it. So Section 26.01, the basic purposes and intent, that's really the same as what was in the code in 92. Section 2602 is the permitted uses. What you see in A and most of B, except for that last phrase, is again, consistent with what was in the 1992 code, allowing everything that's allowed in CO, CC, C1, and C2 districts, and then those things permitted just in the special use permit in the 12.03 district. Your next item you're going to have on your agenda has to do with allowing indoor climate-controlled mini-storage in the C2 district with a special use permit. That was not included in the 92 ordinance, so staff did not include that when we took this ordinance to the P&amp;Z Commission. We have some concerns, again, we can get into later if you want to, about allowing this use in urban core. As we have looked at other cities, and what, when they have special downtown zoning, and even the TC, CCD district here in Fountain Hills, our downtown kind of core zoning, none of those allow mini-storage in the C2 district. But the P&amp;Z Commission did have us put that in the draft code, and that's part of 2602B. In 2603, some additional regulations, again, these are the same as in the previous ordinance. In 2603, they have a requirement that if you have any type of outdoor activity, it's got to be screened. Well, that didn't make sense when we talked about sidewalk cafe-type uses, and so have made that change from the previous code to make sure allowing for those types of uses in a downtown area. 2604, excuse me, 26, yes?
Can we go back to that last slide?
Yes.
You said you made exceptions for following for?
Yes, so that first phrase there is added, so except for outdoor seating as part of a restaurant, then you have to screen, so we're allowing for that activity without having Again, 2604, not general provisions, and 2605, is just reference to the other chapters of the ordinance, so that's the same, and parking and loading. So this first part, the ordinance distinguishes between lots that are larger than 10,800 square feet and those that are smaller. Basically, in each of the four blocks downtown, the corner lots are the ones that are larger, and everything else is under. And so in the parking and loading provisions for those smaller lots, let's see, I guess, make sure, I always get this one backwards. So for the lots over, yeah, over, so over the 10,800 square foot lots, that just refers them to Chapter 7, the parking ordinance, they have to provide their own parking according to the previous code, and that's how it's recommended to you at this point. And then for the lots that are smaller than the 10,500, they don't have to provide any of their own parking, it's taken care of by the common parking, but if they do something that reduces any of that existing common parking, then it's supposed to replace it. As we talked about these provisions with the Platte 208 representatives, and been looking at a particular development in one of these large lots, we weren't sure if it was necessary really to keep that same restriction on the large lots, to make them comply fully with the parking requirements of Chapter 7, provide all that parking on their own lot. We discussed this a little bit with the P&amp;Z Commission, because we hadn't maybe done enough of a study of the available parking and needed parking at that time. They recommended this without making any changes to this particular provision. We did a little bit more of that research between P&amp;Z and council, and included some information in your report about the amount of parking available. If all the lots were developed at single-level parking, we'd have one parking space for every 277 square feet. Typical for commercial areas of this nature is one per 250 to 300. If it gets into office, it gets a little higher, if it's residential or retail, it gets a little lower. So we're pretty close, we think, to the amount of parking. Actually, the way it is zoned today, we could have three stories on all those small lots, and we wouldn't have to add a single parking space, because that's the way it's been planned and zoned previously. We don't expect to see three stories on all those small lots, a lot of it is already developed with one and two stories. So we think there is still some excess parking, so the option for the council tonight, if you want to go ahead and take action on that, staff would suggest that we allow up to a 50% reduction on those larger lots coming to council for a special use permit to do so. So again, it could potentially give some relief in those areas. Section 2607, dealing with outdoor lighting, again, is essentially the same in the plan review. There is a little bit of a change in that 2607, it currently has a reference in there that if you, if there's any adjoining residential or agricultural use, I think it is, then there's a slightly different requirement. When you think about Platte 208 or that north half of it, there is no adjoining residentially-zoned property, and so we just took that out, because it really wasn't necessary. Then we get into 2609, area density and yard regulations. Current code says 40 feet or three stories. It's an overlay district, the underlying zoning district of C2 and C3 that we have there allows 40 feet, and so we just took that out, it's kind of being redundant, and just referenced the underlying district. And then, as far as setbacks go, this has, again, the reduced setbacks for the small lots have no setback requirements, the corner lots have setbacks along the front, and if they're on the corner for the side triangle. And again, we maintained all those as a previous ordinance. One change that we are recommending that's in the code, is that currently, the code allows 100% lot coverage on the smaller lots, but only 60% coverage on the corner lots. We felt that, given the requirements for parking, the requirements for the setback, you're never going to get 100% anyway, but let them get what they can get that meets those other standards. So basically, we recommended, and P&amp;Z has recommended, eliminating that maximum lot coverage percentage on those corner lots, again, so we get as much building area as possible, consistent with those other questions. So we have this before you this evening with the recommendation for approval by the P&amp;Z Commission. Council certainly has options to amend this as they may see fit, continue it, deny it, send it back to staff for future work. Again, staff did have concern, as we look at... Again, staff did have concern, as we look at our general plan, as our downtown specific plan, other communities, we have some concern for that allowance for the miniStorage in the town center area.
I have a question, John. So, if we were to adopt 20-14, we would have to amend it in order to make it so that the parking wasn't mandated? We'd have to make an amendment for the reduction in required parking?
Yes, Mayor. We would add a statement right here on this section that says, again, people aren't exactly how you approve it unless a reduction is approved through a special use permit, or you can receive up to 50% reduction to a special use permit, whichever the council might prefer. That'd be a simple little phrase we'd add right here.
And then, that last one, which, so, to do the parking, but the last, kind of the next last slide, which I think had to do with, yeah, it wasn't the same, keep that one.
Yes.
That one's, but that one's already in the ordinance. So, we don't have to amend for that. We have to amend for the parking.
If you choose to, again, or we can bring that back as a separate item if you feel like it needs more study.
Okay. So, do we have any speaker cards on this? We don't. Okay. So, council? Yes, councilman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. John, so I'm a little confused. If we approve this the way it's written, then we're saying that it's okay for a public storage place to be in the downtown area?
Mayor, councilmember, if you approve this as it's written, and you approve the next item that allows the miniStorage in the C2 with a special use permit, then a person could apply for a special use permit for the miniStorage in the town center area. Could still come back to council for that specific review. It depends on if you want to leave that door open for that or not.
So, we can approve it, though, but take that portion out?
Good.
I guess what I see is, and I'm often reminded by councilmember Tollis about how we can't get the downtown area wrong. I mean, it's the focal point of the town, it's what drives the town, businesses and things that we approve to go there drive the economy and how the town runs and the focal point. What I think, what I've seen lately is, we have, I remember that, if Councilman Brown remembers, that we had the hotel that wanted to go up on Monterey, which butted right up against the condominiums, literally. So, I think when we make these decisions, I mean, I would have liked to have seen the hotel go in the downtown area, where people that come to visit the hotel and stay at the hotel will then go to all the businesses that are in the downtown area, and then a storage place be more suitable for that place on Monterey. I just, I just want to make sure that when we make these decisions, we make very sound decisions, and I just, I like to have the overlay, because basically, without this, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody could build whatever they wanted. I mean, if you wanted a car wash downtown, you could put a car wash downtown.
Mayor, councilmember Spellet, so you'd be subject to anything that's allowed in the C2 zoning district, because that's what's here. The biggest problem with not re-adopting the overlay is the setback requirements and the parking requirements, which wouldn't be able to see the same level of intensity in urban form that we have without those.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be interested to hear Councilman Brown, or all the other council members' their ideas on this. I just feel that we have the opportunity to build things in town, but sometimes we pick the wrong locations. And I'm for building them, as long as they're in the right location. So, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with David on that point. I thought I had all this straight in my mind, but I didn't talk to John yesterday about this. But, you know, in your recommendation, it's talking about staff concern with allowing miniStorage use in this overlay, but so, in the ordinance as proposed by the commission, it's included?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is correct. When we took this to the P&amp;Z Commission, we did not have that use included, but as they reviewed it, they thought, again, because there'd still be the option to come through with a special use permit to give review in a specific case, that they added it in.
And maybe I'm jumping ahead one agenda item, but I'm trying to reconcile staff here in terms of the recommendation that was written versus coming out of a commission on this particular agenda item versus the next one, where you are proposing to allow that type of use, you know, under a special use permit. Is that just because it's subject to further review and stipulations? Is that kind of a thought process?
Yeah, again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, correct. When we look at, set forth the downtown C2, if we look at C2 every place else in the community, we think it can very well fit into those areas. Our only concern is how it fits into our desire to create this urban pedestrian-friendly active core, because the use, while you can design a very attractive enclosed, climate-controlled self-storage facility, it doesn't generate the foot traffic and the activity that goes with what we would normally want to see in this type of area.
And I tend to agree with David in terms of, you know, there has been discussion, and he cited Councilman Tollis, and I will too, as far as the downtown, and, you know, if we do want this to be the Beverly Hills of Arizona, we need to make sure we do get the right businesses down there. We often get criticized already for, you know, you're allowing other businesses down there that aren't retail or whatever, but they meet the zoning regulations that are already there, and we can't control always the type of businesses that move into existing vacant commercial buildings. So, you know, a lot of times, the public doesn't differentiate that, but, you know, here's an instance where we do have specific control over something. And so, I would tend to agree with this overlay, but I would favor an amendment on the parking, and I would also favor removing the miniStorage item.
Thank you. Councilman? Do you have something? Yeah.
So, here's how I see this. We have been watching a slow growth of our community for a long time, and you look at the downtown and you look at the potential opportunities, you need, there's a lot of needs. You need to create a regional draw. We're talking about creating vitality downtown. All proposals from people who want to invest in our community, I want to hear them. I want to have them have the opportunity to be heard, and I want to have them have the opportunity to justify why their business is going to be a good fit for our community. I agree with what planning and zoning has stipulated here. I agree with the amendment in regards to allowing for the option of a special use permit for a climate-controlled miniStorage. I'd like to hear those proposals before I would ever shoot them down. These are not inexpensive builds. We've got a lot of residential that's being built right now with the bet on the come, so to speak, in regards to the investment of those projects and what it may bring to the vitality of downtown. You need, you need storage facilities, you need places that people that are going to be moving to the downtown are going to be able to utilize this type of amenity in the community. If you have businesses that move downtown, a lot of these spaces are not going to be large enough, they are also going to need this type of storage. So, I am not opposed to hearing the proposals when people come to Fountain Hills and want to invest money. So, I would leave that there, and I'd also challenge you to tell me what other businesses potentially couldn't go downtown right now with the existing building codes, and what other type of businesses that would be potentially ones that we would say, you know, we may approve this with a special use permit. And I'll end by telling you a story. In 2002, and Councilman Brown was on the Planning and Zoning Commission when this happened, I invested in this community in multiple ways, but I bought a building that was never used for residential, and it was on the Palisades Boulevard, and Town Hall was over off of Palisades, and I came to P&amp;Z, and I had explained to them that I was going to invest and have a mortgage company, which I still own to this day, and I have an office here in town. That was presented to P&amp;Z, and Chairman Downs, it didn't go so well. And to this day, that building, I sold that building, and now it's an assisted living facility, but still, it would have worked out for an office, it would have worked out for what my proposal was. And I'm glad I was heard, but I want to have, I don't ever want to turn anyone away that's going to invest in our community. I want to hear what they have to say, and have them go through the channels to see whether or not it makes sense. So, in this particular case, I'm in favor of this. Again, I challenge you to come up with what other type of businesses. And I'd also like to address the entertainment district in something to add in regards to what our downtown should be looking like. Yes, I have brought this up before. I'd love to see the Beverly Hills of Arizona. I'd love to see our downtown high-end retail, high-end shops, high-end beautiful restaurants. We've talked about Irish pubs, we've talked about lots of things. You have to have a critical mass. So, there's a lot of businesses that have to be interconnected to make that happen and to create the environment for success for all of them. So, let's not, let's not be too quick to shoot these proposals down. Thank you.
Well, there's certainly two different sides of the coin. I have to agree with Councilman Tollis on this, that I don't think we want to just shoot this out of the sky without hearing, without, number one, seeing what they're going to present, and letting the, letting the folks that are going to be putting the money into our town show us what they're going to do and tell us how they're going to do it. You have to remember that across the street from this particular lot, there's a car wash. You have to remember that if you go west, there is an auto detailing shop, and then one of the, one of the older buildings in town, which is the bowling alley, which one day, hopefully, will be taken completely to the ground and revived into a more attractive building. And across the street, you've got Mods for Rods, which was also a special use permit in that particular area, and it has, it has been around, I think, for probably 10-plus years, and does a tremendous business. I mean, a tremendous business. So, I have to agree with Councilman Tollis that I don't think we can just, that we just cold-heartedly say, no, you need to go find someplace else to build your storage unit, but I think we need to see what they're going to propose. Let's look at the building. I know that planning and zoning, or I understand planning and zoning requested them to put a coffee shop in, an active coffee shop, and I understand that they've put that in the building. I haven't seen the most recent plans, but I, planning and zoning approved it. Let's see, I think it was a 4-0 vote on the last one, because there were two people missing, and it was a 6-0 vote on the first one, because there's an empty, a vacant seat, if I've got that right. So, I think we have to look at what's going to be presented to be constructed on the corner before we make that decision. And besides that, it's going to back up to the previous building in Fountain Hills.
Thank you, Councilman. There were a couple of items that we talked about. The general plan, which is going to be on the ballot in a couple of months, which has to do with the vision, our downtown vision plan, and the fact that there are not other cities or towns that allowed this use in what they would consider their urban core or their downtown. So, there's that part of there. The other part is that even though I, we didn't have any speakers tonight, I understand that the owners, the plat 208 owners are opposed to this, to be a use that's allowed at that point. I've also been cautioned that a special use permit is not, you have to be reasonable, you can't be capricious about it. So, if we change, if we change this, or allow this to occur here, we have some, you know, it does help a little that they need the special use permit, but it's not something that we can just say no to based on a special use permit, because we are making this an allowable use. So, I'm more cautious about it, and especially given that our next item could open up a lot of other opportunities in town for this kind of a facility. So, I wanted to confirm with you about the plat 208 folks who I had read had expressed opposition to this. Is that what your understanding is?
A couple of people I've talked to have expressed their concerns about allowing this use in the town center.
Okay. Any other comments on this? Councilman Charnow, I mean, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to reiterate some of your comments, I'm just reading from the, directly from the staff report. Staff points out that in our study of ordinances from other valley cities, no city or town with specific downtown or town center zoning allowed indoor miniStorage as a use in these areas. This type of use is not consistent with the nature of an urban core setting. So, I understand the comments from the two gentlemen on my left, but, you know, it's like, I don't know how you can have it both ways. If you want this gorgeous downtown, vibrant, et cetera, and I understand they might need storage, but, you know, there's already probably six or seven storage places in town existing, and if anyone wants to go up somewhere, then that's awesome. If that's successful, I am in favor of that. But, again, it comes down to, is this something we want in a shopping plaza overlay district? I tend to think no, and I think pointing out some of the existing businesses that are in there, under the existing zoning, doesn't necessarily justify approving new ones that, to me, just don't seem to fit in what we're trying to do downtown.
Yes, Councilman?
... argument for this, I would say that Fountain Hills has a unique downtown, very spread out, and it was spread out to the point where the town center condominiums were commercial use. That was changed to residential. So, we have a large downtown with an original plan, 70,000 people in the community, so I think we need to be realistic as to what the expectations for our downtown are. The Avenue of the Fountains should be, they should have certain limitations for what type of businesses go in that particular, we talked about that in the past with entertainment districts, and what's not allowed. If there was a way to not have the retail so much of the office space in the downtown corridor, that would be ideal situation, too. Whether or not that's allowed, and whether or not we can create that into our ordinance, that's something that needs to be considered. Office space in our downtown does not create the traffic and doesn't create the vitality that we're looking for. Not where this building is going, as Councilman Brown indicated, you have a car wash, you have a facility that fixes antique cars, you've got hair salons across the street, you've got, you've got a building that was built for an own occupied RV garage for an individual that somehow now is a commercial rental space for a cleaning facility. How that happened, I don't know, but, you know, these are the type of things that in downtown, you need vitality. You can invest, I don't know, what's it going to cost to build this building, $3 million? You can invest $3 million in a facility that, we're not talking about a youth hall facility here, that's going to have outdoor garage doors that are going to be an ISOR. We're talking about a building that's going to fit in, and you're not even going to necessarily even know it's indoor climate-controlled storage facility. So, I think we have to be clear as to what we're talking about here. No one wants ISORS, but we do want activity, and we do want rental fee income for our town, which this creates. Is that correct? This would create that? Storage facilities could be, rent the rates and the commercial rental rate for our community? So, these are tax bases that we're going to continue to add on to our bottom line, and I believe that these type of buildings and buildings that are in investment in our downtown will create other opportunities for others to invest in our community as well. So, I'm in favor of this. I don't see how you can, right now, after looking at decades of vacant land in our downtown, how you can... our downtown, uh, how you can say that we're not interested in hearing what people have to say in regards to spending their money and investing.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman?
Man, Art, I honestly thought that you and I were gonna agree on something tonight. I, I am just absolutely baffled that we are constantly talking about the vitalization of the area and by no stretch of the imagination do I want to ever tell a business owner not to invest in Fountain Hills. That's not the point. I just think that if Fountain Hills was the size of Scottsdale or Tempe or something like that, where, you know, you have to drive aways to get to a public storage place, we literally can drive less than three miles to any one of these storage places that are in town. And I just, I'm not against business. I'm not against this company wanting to make a pitch to us. I just think that we need, we have a very limited amount of land in that area and I just think we need to be very cautious about what we do with that land because it has such a long-term ramifications to the way, um, forward with the town. And, uh, a, a storage facility with a coffee shop? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't even drink coffee, but I just, if I'm gonna have a cup of coffee, I'm not gonna go to a storage facility. I just, I just, to me, it's just wrong all the way around and I'm sorry that we're disagreeing with what the focus of downtown should be 'cause I honestly thought you and I were on the same page on this one, but, um, we're, we're not.
Yeah, we may not be 100% on the same page, but as I indicated, we've got, we've got a large area in our downtown and, and I agree, I believe in having an entertainment district. But I also believe that Parkview, right now, has a lot of retail, has a lot of vacancy and this particular corner lot, this is gonna be built on, which I've reviewed these plans. I've done my homework to determine whether or not I felt this would fit in. And the exterior of this building is gonna look like a, a high-end apartment complex or condos. It is, it does not, it doesn't look anything like a storage facility. So, uh, in that regard, I think that, uh, it, it, in this particular case, would make sense. Now, if someone came to me and said they wanna put a U-Haul facility and they wanna knock down the bowling alley and they wanna have a, a facility like we have over at Enterprise Drive, uh, no, I would not be in favor of that because that would not be consistent with the objective of the area. So I think, I think we agree and, and, uh, I think we have a different point of view in regards to what we're looking at here. I do want to ask staff to go back and I want the town manager to direct staff to go back to looking at our Avenue of the Fountains and creating the, the, the restrictions as to what can and can't go in that particular area to the, to the north and to the south. And that area, I would say, I would, I would want an entertainment district and I would wanna try to focus on having businesses that are gonna drive that retail high-end activity that we're looking for. Sammy's Fine Jewelry, you know, the diamond i- in, in Fountain Hills on the avenue. We want businesses and high-end clothing shops and things of that nature that'll attract people to the downtown. This, this particular facility doesn't scare me to, to, to be put downtown, especially when we're having a lot of rental apartment, apartment homes that are being built right up the street, that people are going to need this type of, uh, this type of a service. And all of the other storage facilities, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe I'm accurate, you can't find a storage facility. There's waiting lists right now to get into these storage facilities. So in that particular case, I think we have a business that might, might make sense in this particular area.
Mayor, if I may, Councilmember, I can't answer that question specifically, but I do know that we have, uh, issued a building permit for another storage facility and have planner view, uh, for another one that currently going through. So there, there are other storage facilities coming to the town, but what the vacancy rate is, I have no idea.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it just needs to be pointed out again that this particular agenda item is very general in nature, doesn't address a specific project or architecture or a property owner or a plan. It just addresses, you know, storage units on a general basis and we're allowing, under the P&amp;Z Commission recommendation, to allow such facilities throughout this particular area north of Avenue of the Fountains, stretching to Palisades between Saguaro and...
La Montana.
Yep, La Montana. So, you know, we're not looking at a specific project right here in this agenda item. It's more broad, it's more general, and that's why I, I just think it's, uh, you know, if we have the, the mentality that any business is, is a good business, well, yeah, then just, we can let anything. And then I just, I think we're just going down a slippery slope here in terms of what we want downtown and, and we just get limited to, oh, we want certain things on the avenue and certain things on Parkview. No, I mean, we're looking at the whole area and I think that's what this agenda item is addressing in a general nature and I think we need to keep that in mind.
Uh, yes, Councilman?
I've listened to everybody's point of view on this and I think, Art, if you're looking to have an entertainment district, how far off this entertainment district is this land that we're talking about for the proposed, uh, it's not that far.
Parkview's one block.
Yeah, one block. So, um, the things that I'm noting is that no other town, I think, allows this type of thing. And if you're looking to drive, if you're looking to drive, um, that entertainment district, this may not be the right project for that particular piece of land.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? I will close the public hearing. No? Yes? There were no speaker cards, so...
I have.
Oh, okay, here comes the speaker card. Okay, we have a card from Donald Andrews. Hi.
Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Donnie Andrews. I'm an architect and probably known for storage project here, but I'd like to really introduce myself. I was a longtime resident in Fountain Hills. I was here from 1984 to 96. I was on the Board of Adjustments from 92 to 96 and was chairman of the Board of Adjustments from 93 to 96. I was here working a lot with Gary Jepson, who was planning director at that time. We spoke a lot about plat 208. Plat 208 is a failure. Plat 208 was created by McCullough back in the 60s when the federal government had a plan of how to create communities at that time and the government assistance they would give to us, hence Fountain Hills and Lake Havasu City. The problem was the ideology back in then and the old data back in then, remember this is 68, so the data that they have was probably 10, 20 years before that, was a downtown township needed all these little lots and plats and that to create the community square, think of Prescott, the community square. The problem is, that's not what we grew into and that's not what we became. That's thinking in the 1940s, 50s, and 60s. And that is, has always been the inherent problem with the downtown Fountain Hills is how do we create plat 208 into something that's more modern and addressing to everybody what's more vital for downtown? That's why in 93, we didn't bring in this overlay again because we were trying to get away from that. We were trying to get away from the basics of plat 208 so it could allow more uses. Now, I could talk about storage and things like that, but right now I wanna talk on this about what I know as being here from the past. The downtown area in today's modern world, if you wanna bring in entertainment and all these kinda things, because it's so dense, because it's so compact, needs specific support. The storage is a support because if you're gonna have entertainment, you're gonna have food, you're gonna have those kinda uses, on these small lots, they have to use every square feet for whatever they can use. They can't use it for storage. They can't use it for even maintenance and things like that. Hence why these facilities become so important to a downtown area. Now, I'm also gonna sit here and say, I have developed storage facilities in almost every downtown area. We won a design award several years ago for putting in the downtown Melrose. So I think we need to understand what the semantics are when we're talking about what cities are allowing it or not. A mini-storage area, I agree absolutely, should not ever be in downtown Fountain Hills. But we're not talking mini-storage. So there's a difference between mini-storage and internalized storage. Internalized storage can only be certain types of products. They are limited to the type of storage that they can have in there. And in today's world, the whole idea about mini-storage, besides that it's clean, it's got cameras, it's security, it's air-conditioned, it's really meant not to be for the homeowners, like a lot of these other things, but more for the businesses. Because the businesses, we're growing and becoming more expensive, can't afford to give up their square footage as back storage areas.
Thank you, sir.
And all these businesses need that. So I'm trying to throw that in there, but at the same time, I'd like to help you guys and I'd certainly offer my services pro bono if you ever need any study discussions and I can try to bring in some more people, uh, to help the staff and things like that. Look at, because this is something that's really been going on for 30 years in, in downtown Fountain Hills.
Thank you.
And I would love to see this change because, like everybody said, you want quality product downtown, you have to create an environment for that quality product to actually work. It doesn't work in small lots.
Okay. Thank you so much. We're outta time here, so appreciate it. Um, does that, um, do you have any other discussion? No? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and, um, you can of course comment again or make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Councilman?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, shopping plaza overlay district, um, minus section B allowing for, um, a special use permit for mini-storage.
Do I have a second?
So I'll second. So I'll second that. And that includes the parking...
You, you can amend it and include that.
So I would like to amend the original motion to include the parking exception for the larger lots.
Is there a second out the amendment, for the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to approve Adopt Ordinance 20-14, removing, um, the approval of indoor mini-storage and including the reduction in the required parking on lots that are over 18, I mean, 10,800 square feet. We have a motion and a second on the amended motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nay.
Do you got that? You think?
So, motion passes 4 to 2.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks for the discussion. It was, um, very good and everybody made a lot of good points.
I'll make a point and it's interesting to note, in, in years, in, a few years back, we get... I just, I just think it's, it's interesting to note that we've had a lot of criticism as a council for going against P&amp;Z recommendations. And some on this council have made a real big point about not going against those Commission recommendations and we just did it.
Well, we accepted three-quarters of them, so I think, um, we had a lot of discussion. I appreciate it. Our next item is, uh, talking about allowing indoor mini-storage in C2 zoning districts throughout the community. Um, Grady?
I'm gonna go ahead and turn this, excuse me. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to, um, our senior planner, Farad. Uh, he's gonna go ahead and give you a presentation on this.
Thank you. Hi.
Great. Hi, uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight and, uh, presenting my first case before So, uh, what I'm presenting before you is case Z 2020-05. Uh, as was kind of alluded to in, uh, John's presentation, this is a, a staff-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment per the direction of the Planning and Zoning Commission to, uh, amend the zoning ordinance in order to allow indoor mini-storage or indoor climate-controlled mini-storage facilities in the C2 zoning district under the condition of a special use permit. As things currently stand right now with the, with the zoning ordinance, uh, this type of use is allowed in the C3 zoning district or the general commercial zoning district as a matter of right and is also allowed in all three, uh, industrial zoning districts, IND 1, 2, and 3. Um, so there are no other conditions where, uh, indoor mini-storage facilities are allowed, uh, either as a, a matter of right, except in the zoning districts that I just mentioned, or with the condition of a special use permit. So I want to provide a little bit of a summary of what the, the C2 zoning district, or in long form, if you prefer, intermediate commercial, uh, zoning district and what it's intended to accommodate. So per the zoning ordinance, it's, it's intended to accommodate sales of goods and services to clientele beyond the immediate neighborhood, so wider, a wider radius than the immediate neighborhood. It's designed for applications at major intersections, for example, Shea and Saguaro, and to a lesser degree perhaps Palisades and, uh, Saguaro. Maintains compatibility with, uh, adjacent uses, making sure that there are, uh, uh, no nuisances that would be presented before the, uh, with the adjacent neighborhoods. And, uh, the C2 zoning district, as all zoning districts really in the zoning ordinance, does establish conditions where the town may grant a special use permit, uh, for certain uses. Example being, uh, uh, automobile sales facility in a C2 with a special use permit, whereas in a, a C3, that type of use is allowed as a matter of right. Uh, so before formulating this text amendment, we looked at two aspects, uh, that we, we wanted to, uh, to research and that included looking a little bit more into the, uh, exactly what are the characteristics of an indoor mini-storage facility? Um, and there are other terminologies used, uh, quite often, but imagine if you will, indoor mini-storage facility typically being climate-controlled, smaller units about 8 by 10, 8 by 8, and, um, uh, the, the bay doors would be entirely indoors within a, usually within an air-conditioned environment. Um, they're modestly sized units, as I, as I mentioned. They're intended to serve a smaller market radius, um, specifically intended for, for residents who don't wanna drive, you know, 10 miles to, um, to, uh, get their belongings whenever they need them. Um, they're adapted for less intense, non-residential use areas. Um, and typically, as we've seen lately with many examples and some of the examples that one of the previous speakers mentioned, they're typically more polished in appearance. They usually include, uh, enhanced architectural elements to make it appear more appealing, um, you know, so that there'd be better curb appeal and, and not look basically like a, like a big box type of, uh, building. And they're primarily, as I mentioned, climate-controlled. Um, another aspect that we looked at, uh, we, we looked at, uh, several jurisdictions here in the Phoenix metro area throughout the valley, 16 of them to be exact, and, uh, I should say, Phoenix was not one of the ones that we had researched simply because it's, uh, a city at a scale that's far different from, uh, the town of Fountain Hills. Um, but we found that 13 of these jurisdictions, of the 13 of the 25 or so jurisdictions that we looked at, uh, allow them, uh, as a matter of right in certain, uh, zoning districts. Um, there are additional districts, uh, in some of these communities where they're allowed, uh, under the condition of an SUP. There were three, uh, there are currently three jurisdictions that require a special use permit for these types of facilities regardless of the zoning district in which, uh, one is being proposed. Uh, two that come to mind include the, the city of Goodyear and, uh, much smaller town being a, a town of Cave Creek, um, requires SUP regardless. Um, we found that there were... We found that there were, as was alluded to, or as was mentioned by John earlier, we did not find any urban cores in any of these jurisdictions, or any central business districts that would allow storage facilities, indoor or outdoor, in its town center overlays, or any equivalent thereof. So, having said that, we are recommending approval of this text amendment in order to expand the inventory of potential sites throughout the town for these type of facilities, while also allowing the commission and the council to review, or review these against such standards as, you know, the impact of traffic, appearance, noise, and business hours, and also to provide an opportunity to control the use in specific areas. So, as I mentioned earlier, staff recommends approval of this text amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and council, would you like to start asking questions, and then we can take it, see if there's any cards? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Farad, your original recommendation of the commission was approval of this? Or did it change after the commission hearing?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Charnow, yes, the original recommendation was approval, as was presented.
If someone wanted to do this, could they come in for a zoning change and for a C3? If it was C2?
Yes, but the, the challenge with that, the caveat to that, is, once you zone a property to C3, you're not only opening it up to the possibility of an indoor mini storage facility, that it carries on with the land, and it opens it up to a whole list of other uses.
Whereas a special use just limits it to that owner, or to that particular business?
The special use permit, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, limits it to the specific use proposed by the special use permit. So, it doesn't open it up to any other uses, other than what's described in the SUP or the ordinance that was formulated with that.
So I guess I'll ask what I did with John, as far as he didn't recommend, staff didn't recommend in the shopping overlay district, but you're recommending this because of the SUP?
Yes.
Restrictions, potentially?
Yes, it's, it is to, as I mentioned, to expand the inventory of potential sites, while limiting it to, rather than limiting it to a particular zoning district by right. Given the, the intensity, or the lesser intensity of these types of facilities, staff believes that it may possibly be accommodated in some of the C2 zoning districts, while, you know, the council or the commission would be allowed to scrutinize it a little bit more, and make sure that it fits in well with the surrounding context.
So the general thought process is, these types of facilities with SUP could probably fit into certain C2 areas, not necessarily all of them.
Correct, that is the thought behind this.
Okay, thanks.
Counselman?
I don't, I'm not sure why we're going through this exercise at all. The council just denied in a C2 district because they didn't think it belonged there, but if the council believed that it should have been there, they would have approved it. So I'm not understanding why we're taking, spending the time going through, doing an amendment, when the council has all the authority in town to say, "You bet, this C2 district will work," because it sets over on Panorama and whatever. But it doesn't work on, on the corner of, yeah, wherever they are, Parkview and Verde River Drive. And so, why are we going, somebody tell me why we're going through this exercise? Because it's meaningless. I mean, we just denied one, but now we're wanting to say, "Well, but if we, if we do this little amendment, we can then, oh, well, we can put it over here in this C2 if the council allows it, or if planning and zoning allows it." So, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not getting into this one at all.
I understand where you're coming from. John, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I thought I heard you say earlier with the other case, that there had been another inquiry from another potential developer for a mini storage. Was it, was it an indoor one as well?
So, Mayor, councilmembers, so we do have another storage facility that's in the works through site plan and view, it's both internal and external, and it's an industrial zone property, so it's allowed by right under the current zoning.
So, do you want to just kind of explain then the thought? Because I think that Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Tollis, you know, have concerns about this, and they're just trying to understand the rationale.
I don't know if I need to comment or not, but Mayor--
I guess it's the logic.
Well, it's almost like, Mayor--
Counselman?
This was a backwards presentation. This, this should have been presented before the previous discussion, because possibly we may have had a few other council members that would have said, you know what? In picture, maybe we do want to have these proposals, maybe we do want to have the opportunity as a council to say yes or no, depending upon where it is. So, I feel like we just, we should have reversed the presentation.
I just want to mention, so we had these, this packet, we, but we all knew what was being presented, and they are two separate items. So we've got, from what you were saying, Dennis, the idea of not wanting it downtown has to do with our SWABAC, our downtown vision, our everything that you've spoken about, but that doesn't say that we don't think it has other places in town, and we want to allow it with a C2 zoning. The SUP is, like we said, it's a layer, but it's not something that we can say yes or no. If we're making it an allowable use, the SUP is helpful, but at some point, we're, you have to approve something if it's, if it's allowed. So, you know, we can fool around with it a little bit, but so I think that what this does is, you know, we can either say all C2 by right, all C2 by SUP, but we don't, but to me, I don't see that as being in conflict with not wanting it downtown. I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
But what I'm saying is, so the council, so we, we had a proposal for a storage unit brought to us, and that, and that storage unit was going to be in a C2 with a special use permit. And we denied the special use permit, so they can't build it in this C2. But if they go to another C2 district, whether we have this amendment or not, and they bring us an application, it's still up to the council to approve or disapprove the unit. So tell me, all I'm wanting to know, tell me what we're doing. Why are we doing this? I, I see no use in it.
Please excuse me if I'm wrong, but right now, you can't apply for one of these with an SUP in any C2 yet. I don't think you're allowed to do that.
Yes, you can.
I don't, I don't think--
Yes, you can. It's not permitted, but you just, you just told us that you can get a special use permit in a C2.
Not unless we do this.
Yeah, not unless we approve this.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see it that way. I didn't see it that way at all.
I wasn't clear in the previous discussion, but that is the case today, it's only by right in the C3, not allowed at all the C2.
You know, C2 with a, with a special use permit.
But you pass this ten times. But it, but you're, Mayor, but you're carving out all of plot 208 in the downtown that this would not apply to. I understand we've already voted on this, but I'll just make my case again. Why would the council want to--
I think your mic's not on.
Why would the council want to not hear a proposal in all C2, if that's what we're looking to do, is get investment in our community? There are plenty of lots in C2 zones that we probably would love to have someone invest $3, $4 million to put a facility like this. So--
Agree? Passing this one.
Any other--
Rather, we won't allow it in any, in Parkview, won't allow it anywhere near plot 208.
The overlays, but you pass your right, you can allow that.
Yeah.
Counselman?
So isn't it, so isn't it good if we're pro-business, and we want people to bring offers to us, isn't it good if we approve this? Because now, it takes, according to you guys, it takes the ability, it puts on the table that a, that a storage place can go into a C2 with a special use permit, whereas prior to that, it wouldn't even be on the table.
Correct.
So it's prob, it's, unless I'm Dennis, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong.
I, that's not so. We use special use permits for--
Turn your mic off.
For RV parking is not allowed in a C2 district, isn't that right? But with a special use permit, you can allow that. Is that not right?
Well, I think we should, we should be very clear on what we're voting for. I know that Councilmember Tollis and Councilmember Brown are mad about the, or, you know, not happy with the previous vote.
That's okay.
But we can't--
Well, I'm mad, but we both served on P&amp;Z, so we kind of feel like we might understand some of the logistics behind all of this. Chairman, Councilmember Brown was the chairman of P&amp;Z. So, I mean, we're just sitting here thinking to ourselves, this, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, the way that this was presented. And I think this presentation, which you're doing an excellent job, should have been first, and maybe then we would have been more open-minded to all C2 zonings. Why not? You can say no.
Well, we can't relitigate, we're already past that.
Well, we can.
So I guess what I want to know is, is that, are you guys opposed to the fact that just because it's not going into the overlay, that this, it shouldn't be C2 anywhere?
No, we're past that. We're past that. It was my understanding that you could go into a C2 district with a special use permit and put about anything you wanted to, if it was approved by the council.
So is that--
Not by right, not by right now, but now you can't, and what they're saying to us is, that it's by right, it's not allowed in a C2, hence even with a special use permit, you can't put it in a C2. I disagree with that theory.
Well, a thing is--
I'm sorry, let's, let's see what Aaron has to say.
No, Mayor, members of council, I was gonna say, point to the section of the zoning ordinance that specifically speaks to, and there are, there are several sections, but the one on uses subject to special use permits in C2 zoning districts specifically, is section 12.05, and then it lists out the uses that would be permitted in C2 with a special use permit. So if, so I think the disconnect might be that, yes, there are a number of uses that are permitted with a special use permit in C2, and those are listed out in code. So I think my understanding is correct, John and Farad, if I'm correct, that this is adding that effectively to that list.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor?
Don't forget the time, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I want to bring up what I had already said on the council in the minutes, is that I would like, and I asked staff to direct, our staff to come up with all the lists of what potentially could be a special use permit.
They're all in our code. So we have a list that, in each of our zoning districts, has a list of things that are allowed, things that are allowed by right, things that are allowed with a special use permit, and then there are things that are just never going to be allowed. So that's, those exist. So this item right now is just to add mini storage to an allowed use with a special use permit. Otherwise, you can't even do it now at all in C2.
So, Mayor, if I may, and Councilmember Brown, so, I'll agree, there are maybe a few odd things in the current code. Vehicle storage is allowed by special use permit in the C2 currently, but it's limited to vehicle storage. It doesn't list all other types of storage, it doesn't include mini storage. The only place I find mini storage is under the C3 district as the community use.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Are there any speaker cards? Yes? First one is Don Andrews.
Hey, I'm Don Andrews again. I'll try to clear some things up, I think it could help. I understand where the council is trying to weigh and go back and forth, and I am very understanding of the downtown. The first thing I would talk about is, we use a lot of terms generally too much, when in building codes and constructions, they need to be very specific. Mini storage, vehicle storage, internalized storage, in my mind, are three different things and three different uses, and they should be spelled out that way. But somehow, we're blurring them in, and when you blur them in, then we don't want vehicle storage, but that could be okay, but since it's all under one thing called mini storage, you know, it blurs what we're really allowing in it. And I think what it does, it hurts the council's ability, and the city's ability, to pick and choose what they want in there. Many cities are very strong in their discussion of what is mini storage, outdoor storage, and internalized storage. The problem why it's not in any of these lists that you have, when we developed them 30 years ago, internalized storage didn't exist. There was no such beast. There was no such things in any city, in any municipality in the United States that defined internalized storage. And internalized storage is far different than mini storage, because in the, in the idea of mini storage, it is an outdoor use. It doesn't have to be conditioned. It doesn't have the security, it doesn't have a lot of things that don't go with what is considered internalized storage. And it's meant for different type of districts. It's meant for contractors, different type of storage uses as well. Internalized storage is limited to certain uses. You can't put flammables, this, that, whatever, into an internalized storage facility like you can an external storage facility. So we have to talk about what, why, I keep saying, let's not use the word mini storage. This should be, if we're gonna talk about something for C2, it should be only for internalized storage only. The word mini storage in itself can bring up some uses you just don't want in there, and I'm the first one to admit that. I, I think the key here, that's hard to see, and when I'll keep talking about internalized storage today, and I can show you tons of pictures, but I think you guys understand that. The key to understand about internalized storage is, internalized storage became a new beast, because it came out of the need, not for the residential sector, but for the commercial sector. 60% of the people who use internalized storage are commercial business applications. And that can be hospitals, for medical records, all sorts of things. So, when we talk about where they're allowed at, and we're talking about downtown districts, once again, very few cities in the state of Arizona have a plot 208-type downtown area. So it's not really--
Thank you.
--fair to kind of weigh that.
Thank you, sir. The time is up.
Okay.
Maybe we should be saying indoor mini storage units, which is how it's here, and we've just been saying mini storage.
I would just say indoor internalized storage.
Okay. Thank you. Any other cards? Bob Mandel?
I live in Fountain Hills, because I love Fountain Hills. And from the outside looking in, I think we do a lousy job of attracting more business, which I believe we really need. I support the zoning, but the, the empty space that we have in our town, which goes on forever and forever, we need to fix that. This is a quiet business, no noise, no traffic, and I think it will-- This is a quiet business, no noise, no traffic, and I think it will attract other businesses who are going to need the space. And I ask you to just consider that. I even based my, I have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based here in Fountain Hills that gives bikes to kids all over Arizona. So we, we have the greatest town, but we need more business. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards? No? Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for staff, I guess. I mean, the way the proposed ordinance is worded, it does say indoor mini-storage, so is, is that, is that an issue? Should we change it, or does it not matter? You know, just looking for professional opinion on that.
Is there a definition section of the ordinance that describes what that is? Usually there is.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe that's defined in the zoning ordinance, the terminology that was presented before you, indoor mini-storage. It is? It is? Okay. As the previous speaker was saying earlier, we, we may consider the indoor, was it indoor internalized mini-storage as...
Any other? I mean, it's not in what's written here, but...
I have a question.
Yes, yes, Councilman?
Or legal counsel?
Passing this and allowing other C2 zones to have this new opportunity to market their properties, going to potentially open litigation to other C2s that were...
Mayor and Councilman Tollis, I, I guess the last part of the question is what I, what I'm not understanding, what, which other things that we're putting restrictions on?
We have C2 in our downtown district that currently we are restricting based on our previous agenda item. And now we are passing a new zoning ordinance that's going to allow this type of use on C2 zoning in other sections. Is it possible that you're opening up litigation from another commercial business, commercial property owner that's going to say, you know what, that's, that's, that's not, that's not fair?
Mayor, Councilman Tollis, I think in this instance, so first of all, with regard to whether it's possible, I suppose anything's possible, but I think specifically with regard to the overlay, my understanding is we're keeping the overlay the same as what it has historically been treated as up to this point. So it's not rescinding any right that the person, that the property owner originally had in the overlay district. It's codifying what previously existed.
All right. So let me ask you then, the existing C2 with special use, are any of the downtown C2s allowed to have a presentation, to have any of the existing C2 special use? Okay? And, and if they are right now...
John, if you can...
Essentially, you're, you're not changing anything for them, right?
Yeah, John, I think it's important for you to come up and answer the question.
Yes, I did. Might take you just a second to make sure, get that out of the way. Take just a second, get back, make sure I cite this correctly.
You understand the question?
No, I, I, all right, I understand. I just want to make sure I cite the ordinance correctly, and I, I can just go ahead and...
So currently...
So, so currently, maybe I can find it right here.
Let's specifically talk about the special use...
Sure, sure.
And, and what's allowed in a special use in C2. So the question is, all of the downtown C2, if anyone came forth with any application to come before council to get a special use approval...
Right.
Are we carving out this particular...
Turn your mic off.
Are we carving out this particular use for C2 outside of the downtown, when all of the other existing special use could still be applicable to the downtown?
John?
Yes, so Mayor, Councilmember, in the zoning code, in Section 12.02, it goes through a variety of situations for uses that are permitted. And so under the overlay district, what we have had historically, and what was just approved by council, allows all the uses that are by right in the C2 district, and it allows in Section 12.03, all those uses that are subject to special use permit in the C1 through C3. That's the way it was historically, that's the way it is now. So those special uses, the things that require special use permits, are allowed. There's Section 12.05 of the zoning ordinance that allows additional things just for the C2 district by special use permit. Those have not been included historically, those are not included in what the council just passed. What we're proposing to amend tonight is in Section 12.05 to add the mini-storage of the indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility as one of those uses allowed by special use permit under Section 12.05. So as our council said just a moment ago, historically, we have not allowed any of those special uses in this portion of C2 area, and that will be consistent with the future. But there are special use permits that you can get that are allowed under another section of code, 12.03.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So this brings up one more question. What if somebody were to bring something to us, a, a new type of building, or a new type of business, that's, that's not even in, in our code, in the ordinances at all, and they want to build it in a C2? Would we just add it to the, to the approved, or the, the list that, that we'd get a special use permit for? Is that what we would do?
Mayor, Councilmember, if someone comes in with a use that isn't clearly classified in our zoning ordinance, the first step is to, as the zoning administrator, to look at it and attempt to classify it in the most appropriate location. Code gives me that authority to do that. And then if somebody doesn't like how I have classified that, their step is then to appeal that to this council for a decision on where a use gets classified.
And maybe that's what I was confusing, the ability for somebody to come to the town and apply for a special use permit in, in, in an area that is, is not used, it's not used in that area, and, and you give them the ability, or don't give them the ability, and they bring it to the council, and the council says, John, I think, I think you're wrong here. And that's, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, I, I more clearly understand why, why we're doing what we're doing, but I, it just begs the question, well, what's the next item that we're going to have come to town, that we have no idea what's going to be coming to town, and how's that going to be handled? And you just explained it, and that was the confusion that was going in my mind, because you have the ability to bring something to council for approval or disapproval, and whether it's approved in that area or not. Okay?
And Councilman...
That's, that's the point.
And Councilmember Brown, you'll recall, because it was a recent situation, the medical sound.
That's, that is exactly right.
And I will also agree with the speaker before about, one of the things on my list at some point is to look at our list of uses. They are out of date, and we need to see if we can bring them up to date, so we have maybe fewer confusions in the future.
Thank you. Mayor?
Councilman?
So getting, getting back to my question for our legal counsel, do you feel that we would be opening ourselves up to litigation from C2 in the downtown overlay district if we were to pass this for C2, other areas of the, of the community?
Mayor, Councilman Tollis, although like, as I said before, certainly an allegation could be made, I believe that the likelihood is no, because again, what we're doing is codifying a set of existing, codifying the overlay that previously existed and what people have always operated under, and we're not diminishing any property right for those individuals. It's just a codification of what has already existed within that overlay district.
And, and John, for clarification, you indicated that all of the special use, itemized special uses right now would not be allowed in the downtown overlay district if someone came in and applied for a special use, as is right now? Is that what you said?
Mayor, Councilmember Tollis, again, Section 12.03 of this zoning ordinance allows for items to be considered by special use permit in the C1 through C3 zoning districts. Those are included in the overlay. So those items that require special use permit, they can still apply for even in this area.
So am I correct to say, now that you just said, what you said, that someone could come in and apply in the overlay district for a special use for what's on the list right now, that we're adding this item, but we're carving it out of the overlay district right now as a council?
No. So Section 12.05 lists special use, items for special use permit only in the C2 district. That's where this mini-storage is going, and that section has not been allowed previously in the town center area, and so that's consistent with where we are today. There are a lot of other uses in, so actually what, what P&amp;Z had done is to take this one item out of that list in 12.05 and add it here while excluding all the others that you could have applied for special use permit for under 12.05.
I, I want to make sure I'm understanding, and, and, and legal counsel, do you understand where I'm going with this? And, and am I off track here? We're cut, we are creating for C2 outside of the overlay, this particular use that we're going to say, yes, we can, we can do this, but these other, John just indicated, all of these other special use are available for C1s through C3, and can be presented to the council, and we could approve for the downtown overlay district. So this one type of property, we're saying no, and that's where I asked, are we creating a situation where we're going to open ourselves up to litigation when you have someone who wanted to invest a substantial amount of money on a property in our town, and they're going to say, how come you're, how come you're carving me out? When all these other special uses previously were allowed, if I came to the council with a special use permit? Am I missing something here?
Yeah, Mayor and Councilman Tollis.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand, I understand what you're getting at, but the, what the council just did in the last agenda item, some, some minutes ago, was add a list of uses that were not previously allowed within the overlay district, right? We just codified the overlay district and said, you can have these uses too. Right, John?
So, so what the council did was approve the same list of uses...
Sorry.
That's always been in the overlay district for the C2 district, which includes all the uses permitted by right. The list of uses permitted by special use permit that are allowed in the C1 through the C3 district does not include the uses permitted only by special use permit in the C2 district...
Okay.
Under Section 12.05, and I could open that up, and we could read through what those things are, but there are, there's a number of things there that have already been excluded since 1992 from being available to the property owners in this overlay area.
And that's, that to me is the crux of what you're asking. There are other uses that exist in C2 with special use permits that are not going to be allowed in the overlay. And now this one is just another one that will be added, I don't know what they are, but there are other uses that are allowed in C2 that will not be allowed in the overlay. You know, for me, it's easier to just think of the overlay as another separate district, another separate zoning classification. And that's, that, that supersedes basically what you might think could go in there. And so I don't see how including, or just adding an extra use for C2 jeopardizes what is not allowed in an overlay.
Mayor?
Yes.
The, the C2 zoning, the businesses that are not allowed right now, am I wrong, John, that they're not allowed in any C2? Is that correct?
So again, I'd like to get to the code itself. So Section 12.05 of the zoning code uses subject to special use permit in the C2 district only. Includes art and metal ornament shops, automobile fuel dispensing, building landscape material sales, cabinet and cabinetry shops, convenience stores, nurseries, printing lithography and printing establishments, rental services, taxidermy, light assemblies, storage, new and used automobile, sales, vehicle storage facilities. So those are uses today that require special use permit in the C2 that based on the previous overlay, the new overlay, you couldn't apply for in the town center area. With the current text amendment that you're considering, is adding to that list indoor climate-controlled self-storage facilities. So that'll be part of that total list of things that you couldn't before, still couldn't apply for in this...
Mayor, Mayor John, clarifying, C2, not just overlay, are you, anywhere in C2 in Fountain Hills, those are no, those are not permitted, correct?
Anywhere in Fountain Hills, you have C2 zoning. If you want to do this use, you have to apply for special use permit.
That's correct, yes.
But they are allowed in C2, they're not allowed in the overlay.
Correct.
So this is just another one added to that list.
Correct.
All of them require a special use, regardless what C2 zoning you are in.
In C2, but, right, but they don't, but you can't even go there with, in the overlay district.
Without a special use permit?
At all, period. At all, period.
John, is that correct?
Right. With the overlay, you couldn't apply for these special use permits.
You can't, you can apply, cannot.
Cannot, cannot with the overlay, apply for any of these special use permits.
Vice Mayor?
Senator, so just clarifying, I mean, we didn't really, in the previous action, we didn't carve that particular use out, it was already out, and it's been out since 1992, correct?
Correct.
We just didn't add it.
Correct.
Correct? So, so I, I would just like to go ahead and move approval of ordinance 20-10, change the wording in the ordinance to internalized...
Let me, can I close the public hearing first? There we go. Sorry.
It's okay. So move approval of ordinance 20-10, change the wording from indoor mini-storage to internalized climate-controlled storage? Is that much better, John?
Yes.
I mean, okay.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you so much. Pretty complicated stuff. Our next item is a proposal to change the code regarding health and sanitation relating to property and landscape maintenance.
Mr. Wesley will be handling this item as well.
Mayor and council, one more. Hopefully, this one may not take as much time. So, yes, the item before you this evening is to consider some changes to Section 10.2 of the town code, as it deals with property maintenance. This section of the town code deals with health and sanitation in general, and then 10-2 with litter and nuisances. Give a brief background here, and then we'll talk about the specific changes that are proposed for 10-21, 10-22, and 10-215. So our code enforcement staff, one of their primary responsibilities is going around town, responding to complaints and issues with regard to property maintenance. And there are a number of regular issues that they have to deal with, such as dead vegetation, line of sight issues at intersections, poor maintenance of properties. And as they do work on those items, their goal is always to get compliance. They don't want to penalize people, they don't want to, you know, harass people, they want to bring things up to an acceptable standard, as has been set in the town. But with that, with the current regulations and definitions we have, they're, they're fairly general, fairly broad. And so sometimes it creates more challenges, more difficulties in, in working towards that compliance than we would like. And so we have reviewed some of the codes from other towns to see how they handle some of these issues, and studied best practices. Code enforcement staff has talked with staff from other, other... from other communities. And with that, we have looked at the research and proposing some modifications to our current code. And so with that, one of the challenges we have is that we don't really have a clear definition necessarily, distinction in our code about developed property versus what the natural desert looked like, or what vacant property is. And so we are, in Section 10.2, which is the definitions section of this portion of town code, we're proposing some new definitions that help clarify what we mean when we're talking about these different things. What is developed property, landscape area, the native vegetation, or natural desert? And in particular, I'm going to, those other definitions are available in the report at the end of the PowerPoint if we need to actually see those other definitions. But I did want to highlight this one about weeds, because it has a key piece to it. And that is this idea of the six inches. Currently, under the nuisance code, we'll see this in a minute, it's a maximum of 24 inches that things can grow before we call it a nuisance. And we see that as being a challenge. And it's a lot taller than what we see in other communities. So as part of the definitions, we've added this definition of weed and set the height at six inches for what we would term a weed. One of the other, then, when we get into Section 10-2, too, is we're actually defining what are the nuisances. Item D in that list is the one that most closely deals with the landscape maintenance issues. And so with that, we are proposing to change the existing code. It's listed on the top of this page. Again, that's where you have the current 24-inch standard before it becomes a nuisance. We're proposing to simplify that and really push all the definitions and all the standards into Section 10-15 of the code. And here would just be a reference. If you're in violation of one of those things, then it's a nuisance. So the real meat of the changes is in Section 10-215, currently titled on-sightly premises. We're proposing to amend that heading to on-sightly premises slash landscape standards, and then add some new standards to the code to deal with each of those types of situations that we can find. So in Section 10-215B, this particular section then talks about landscaping on developed properties and sets the standards for those properties. And it applies then to things that are visible from the public or private property. So if it's in your backyard and it's green and it's all off, and nobody can see it, then this wouldn't apply. But if we can see it, then it's a problem. And so we're looking for deteriorated or neglected appearance. Cannot have uncontrolled vegetation, weeds, tall grass, dead or damaged. And one of the challenges our code enforcement staff has is people say, well, I'm just letting it go back to natural desert. That's their excuse for them not maintaining their property. And we're saying, no, you can't, that's not, that doesn't work. Neglected landscaping is not going to be considered natural desert. In Section C, then, we do talk about natural desert, and what that is and what the requirements are. So if you do indeed have natural desert, you do know on some of our larger hillside properties, you often have a combination. You'll have that back part of your lot that you can't disturb, and you have that natural desert. But we still have some standards that are in here about being maintained free of the dead or damaged materials. Also, we give the fire marshal here some opportunity, if we think we're getting into a fire hazard situation, to be able to go and look at that property and require some removal of those materials within structures and within, near the street. Section 10-215D then deals with vacant lots. And again, they must be maintained free of any substantially dead or damaged diseased items, free of trash and debris. And again, we can use the fire marshal to come in and look at it, and if they think it's creating a hazard of fire danger, that they can require some cleaning of that to eliminate those hazards. One of the other challenges we have is property owners will say, well, my property ends here, and there's the right of way. Right of way is not mine. I don't have to maintain that. It's been the policy of the town and consistent enforcement that, yes, you are responsible for everything out to the curb, but it's not actually in the code. So we're adding that here. So it's specific, so we can hopefully not have to have that discussion too much in the future. And this point of the code does require maintenance out to the curb at the same level as the rest of the property. Another section, again, that we have challenged with sometime, is maintenance of overgrowth along the street, particularly in the site triangles. And so Section F specifically deals with the requirement to maintain the vegetation, to not obstruct and provide clear visibility that would endanger persons or property. And then Section G deals with overhanging branches and vegetation that affect sidewalks and streets. So it sets a minimum 15-foot clearance over streets and alleys, a minimum 7-foot clearance over sidewalks. It requires, again, the shrubs and brush be trimmed back from sidewalks so they're not obstructed, and you can get through there. So those are our proposed changes. We think that, again, with these clearer definitions and standards, that'll facilitate our code enforcement staff to be able to work with the public to ensure compliance and keep property well maintained. Council options here, again, approve, approve with any modifications, and I return for further study. Staff recommends approval as of the minute.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Yes, Councilman?
I'll make it really quick. Is this going to be enforced? Because one of my problems with code enforcement is they want to be driven by a complaint. And I believe that code enforcement should generate their own work. If they on view something, they should issue a citation or meet with the owner, tell them the problem, because neighbors don't want to rat on neighbors. That's a problem. So how is it going to be enforced?
Mayor, Councilmember Spellch, our policy has been that we go by complaint. That keeps our code enforcement staff very busy as it is. If the council would like for us to change that policy, I think that's maybe another discussion we need to have, on how we want to see it approached. But I certainly understand that concern, that issue that you have about just from, like, you see an obvious violation.
I want to just step in, too. So that is a good point that Councilmember Spellch just brought up, because, as you're right, that has been primarily, when we had only one staff person, now we have two. The person also works weekends, really is very effective. I will also tell you that under this new proposal before you, when, a lot of what you saw is in the right of way. And so when public works has seen this, or our contractors that are doing some of our right of way maintenance, people have let some of their yards, they're not aware. We've been dealing with some recent issues with palm trees that have fallen down that were really in people's yards, but they believe it's in our yard, our right of way. What I'm telling you is that we will also have our folks report these to code enforcement and deal with it through doing a notice of violation that goes to the property owner. So I do think we need to probably, at some point in the future, talk about, because it is a resource allocation issue. You're absolutely right. I think if somebody drives by something, and, you know, a situation, and they drive by it all the time, they shouldn't have to wait for a complaint if they see it. And code enforcement people, like, you know, a lot of us that are familiar with the codes, when we see something, we should really try to act on it, because we shouldn't have to wait for people to call us. So I think now we have additional staffing, that we should be a lot more proactive.
Right. Because the council, you know, was one of the mayor's objectives when we first took office, was the mayor's objective to hire another code enforcement officer. We all agreed to do that. And I just believe that if the police department only answered complaint calls, we would be, the police department, Captain Crassor would tell you, the police department would be a whole less busy, because they generate their own work by on-view traffic stops and everything. So like I said, that was always my problem with code enforcement. I know code enforcement in other towns and in other jurisdictions that on-view things all the time. And I just think we really limit ourselves by waiting for a neighbor to basically rat out another neighbor.
Thank you, Mayor. Totally agree with this proposal. Anything to help our staff clarify these issues and work with our residents to rectify some of these situations is a step in the right direction. I tend to agree with Councilmen Spellch, too, and Grady. I think that is something we should look at in terms of, with our beefed-up staffing now, be a little more proactive. I mean, sometimes you do get into the area of, well, you know, we're picking on somebody, and there's already that accusation. But I think we can deal with that on a case-by-case basis. So I agree with that. And the other thing, and this is maybe not related specifically to this proposal, but I think, you know, John, I asked you a couple of months ago about the property down there on Shea, near Beeline, you know, the old Taco Bell, and it's been, you know, destroyed by fire, and it's a chain link fence. And U.S.A., at that time, there really was nothing in our ordinances or codes to deal with that in terms of rectifying that situation, either bulldoze it or fix it or whatever. And maybe that's something we should look at in the future, too. And I don't know if that's a blight thing or something we have the ability to do, but I think that's definitely needed as well.
Yeah, it's a really good, really good point. Mayor also brought up something, too, and we're going to add that to the work plan as well. John, so this would be something I agree, because we've heard from other people, not only about that, but other sites that are either unfinished construction. We also have some situations where people may have started putting footings in lots, and then somehow they didn't finish, and you got rebar sticking up. So anybody, any kids could be, you know, impaled just in the area. So John and I have talked, and that's going to be something that we'll add to the work plan, that will address a number of these types of issues in the future, and they'll be coming back to you. So we appreciate that.
Before I make a motion to approve, I have to ask the question, will the town islands and town-owned right of ways be held to these same standards?
Yes, our staff will, if we see something that we think is in the town, we will be sure notify Justin and his staff, just as they notify us when they see the private property.
The biggest issue living in the desert, and particularly in this community, is a lot of people, they can't discern, you know, where their property line ends and where the right of way is. And I think I hear what you're saying. Will we take care of our property the same way we're asking people? And yes, the answer is yes. And if you're aware of something that we're not, let me know, and we'll address it.
So I'd like to, let's see here. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance 2020 as presented. That's my motion.
You have a motion and a second. Were there any cards on this item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, John. Big night. We have a lot of these seams.
Thank you. Mayor and council, the next item is consideration of approval of our cooperative purchasing agreement with M.R. Tanner for the First Amendment with a cooperating purchasing agreement with the City of Chandler. I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation over to Mr. Waldy, our Public Works Director.
Madam Mayor, council members, a statement upfront first. Congratulations, Councilmember Friedel. We look forward to working with you. Just a short time ago, in fact, in March of this year, we came to council and asked for permission for them to approve a large contract with the Tanner Company to continue our progress in regards to pavement management and pavement maintenance. As part of that presentation, some maps were provided. One of the maps that were provided, which is on the screen right now, shows the areas in the downtown that were a high priority to the mayor and council for last year. In part of that presentation, staff described how there was ongoing work in the downtown area, including the roundabout and Keystone. And we intended to come back to the mayor and council within the next fiscal year, which we're in now, and ask for permission to work on these segments that we could not finish as part of that construction, and it would not be in the best interest to come in and do paving in these remaining areas while this construction was underway. We're here tonight to ask in part that you approve an amendment that will allow us to continue to work on the downtown segment. The areas that are shown in red are the areas that were already completed by the end of June 30 of last year. The areas that are shown in blue are the areas that we are proposing now. It should be noted that Westby was originally included in this downtown, but currently is removed simply because of the progress of that development over there. It is not advancing at the level that we had hoped it would, but we are still optimistic. With that said, it's not completely off of the table, and we may be able to come back in the spring of next year and work on that if it is ready. The next screen right here shows the additional areas that will be included, and you'll see that the downtown is also in this. These are primarily the local streets that meet the criteria that we can actually save them and prolong their life out seven to 10 years. And I'm going to add a little information in regards to that statement. We now know, based on two independent studies approximately 10 years apart, that our rate of deterioration is considerably flatter than we had originally imagined. And so that allows us a window to look into opportunities and know that it takes longer for some of our segments to deteriorate. And the following statement is one of the favorites of the town engineer, in which he describes prolonged periods of drought. In prolonged periods of drought, we are not likely to see that rate of deterioration increase. My statement back to Mr. Harrell is, we have been in a prolonged drought, in my opinion, in the desert for over 2,000 years, Mr. Harrell. So please be more clear. With that said, the areas that are shown on this map, we will be coming back to in the fall. And I'm a little bit ahead of myself. Let me back up. The last slide here, we are asking permission now. So we are prepared, as soon as the roundabout is completed and the off-site work for Keystone is done, we can immediately come in as early as October and complete the downtown and tie all of this improvement and this progress in the downtown together. The next one, which has shown primarily the local roads in the residential neighborhoods, we would like to come back into in the spring. An explanation in regards to the delay is we need to allow a little bit of additional time for the utilities to make any necessary adjustments in these areas prior to us getting in there. The first two slides, in fact, are shown in the packet tonight. The next slide I'm going to show you simply was not ready, and I apologize for not having it in the packet, but I want to share it with you now. These are the areas that, starting in November, so in the winter, we will begin crack filling all of these areas. Crack filling is part of our ongoing maintenance. And what this will allow is we will do crack filling in these. For those that require an additional layer in next fiscal year, we will do that. But these streets shown in blue here will be much less expensive for the treatment that'll be applied to them in the outlying years in regards to a mineral bond and/or a slurry seal, and quite possibly a chip seal with a cape on it, which is a different treatment that we now know through modern technology allows for seven to 10 years of additional use from a road that we could not afford to completely reconstruct. But now we may be able to afford to add seven to 10 years of life to it for a fraction of the cost for reconstructing it or doing a full depth mill and overlay in that area. And the reason I bring that up, and this is important, what we are asking for approval tonight is not included in the 10-year horizon that we will be talking about in later months and years as we build the 10-year pavement management plan. This is the program that we are currently still working on, which is to save what we can save and preserve what we can preserve with the limited amount of funding we have here. And then in outlying years, we will discuss, to use the mayor's words, other possible funding sources to look at the long-term plan. In regards to the slides, that's all that I have to show you tonight. I will answer any questions that you may have in regards to those.
Justin, I do want to just add something that we didn't address in your comments or my comments, and that is, due to some carryover funding this year, we were able to enhance the level of expenditures for this contract from $2.5 million to $3.3 million.
Indeed. And I want to be clear in the town manager's statement there. And I want to be clear in the town manager's statement there. We do indeed have about $3.3 million. However, we are only asking for 2.6 in this amendment. The reason is, is that remaining money is already encumbered in the contract that council approved last year, but the funding became available this year to pay for some of the work that we didn't finish before June 30 in the previously shown slides, and also give us an opportunity for a head start on the upcoming roads in regards to pulling core samples to determine our depth and do some additional work that cost a little bit of funding there. So some of the money for this year is already encumbered in last year's contract. The remaining funding, which we are asking for tonight, is the 2.6. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Miller.
Questions? Anybody have any questions? I just have one that I always ask, which is, you know, folks give us input, you know, and I look at the map and I'm like, "Oh, Richwood's not there," or "This one's not there," that people are particular issues with. Is it fair that some of them that are in just like really bad shape, we just can't, they're sort of, you know, tipping point sort of stuff, and so that's why it wouldn't be here yet? Or, because I know, you know, you get all those emails, I give them to you, and what's a response, basically?
It's a fair question, Madam Mayor, and it's difficult. So the town manager and I sat down to discuss this, and in fact, we made a difficult decision, and it's very similar to decisions we've made over the last several years. We have a small pot of money, but this year, we did in fact decide to go get one of our backlog streets that is simply not savable by any other means besides reconstruction, and we added that. And when we did that, we reduced our overall funding to do some of the other localized streets, but we found it important to pull that particular one out, and that particular one is Pinto. It has a relatively high traffic count. It feeds some other areas. So we are going to go in this year and do a reconstruct on Pinto. For clarification, based on our standards and our assessment and its PCI, the alligatoring, the cracking, and the subgrade, it is not savable any other way. What it also is going to allow us an opportunity to do with this funding is have a learning tool for our toolbox. This is one of the pre-incorporation streets where historically it was a 1-inch leveling course on graded native. And so by going into that area, which is taking place now, they're drilling in and they're drilling down the full six inches, so we can determine what materials make up that subgrade and that 1-inch leveling course, so we can then lean on a professional engineer to help us understand what we need to do to control that type of material in that area and make it suitable for two full inches of asphalt in the future to give us a longer life or extend the longevity of that area. So there's going to be a longer answer, and I'm going to share it with you right now. It's written in the staff report. Mr. Miller and I discussed this, and we found it important that we include this. The pavement management program used to complete the Town of Fountain Hills pavement analysis in 2018 is a robust enterprise asset management known as Lucity, and we pay to use that, and we have all of the data that was collected there. It was conducted by IMF and IMS and the staff, and the way we do it is we prioritize and optimize a multi-year rehabilitation process using sound engineering, financial principles, to select rehabilitation candidates. The system prioritizes, ranks the potential candidates using factors such as functional class, pavement type, strength, and cost of deferral. We're going to get a little bit deeper into those statements. In regards to the class, so our arterials are a priority, because they carry and drive commerce into this community and through this community and around this. Our second highest level is our collectors, and then you will oftentimes hear myself, Mr. Miller, the town engineer, refer to as major collectors or minor collectors. Again, the collectors are our second highest of class and priority. Local roads are critical and important, because they bring you from your home to the aforementioned commerce, but they are our lower priority, because they historically do not carry as much traffic. With that said, again, they are very important. The functional classification is used to prioritize the roads that receive more traffic, serve commerce, and deteriorate at a more rapid rate. So in this case, arterials have a higher priority in the pavement management system followed by collectors and local roadways. In summary, the town's pavement management program uses a combination of prioritization, road class, pavement type, and strength, and optimization for the cost of deferral to publish the recommended rehabilitation program based on models assigned in the funding. It's considerably more complicated than that, because what Mr. Miller and I got out of this year was based on our assessment of our funding from last year. So there were more roads shown, and we had to make difficult decisions based on the classifications, the length, the width, as to how much it would cost. And so we had to reduce that to fit into our budget. It's not an easy task. I'm not going to share with you the roads that didn't make it, because it makes it even more difficult for this elected body and us to explain how we arrived at that despite the fact that we just explained it. It's a difficult process with limited funding, and we certainly do the best we can and intend to continue doing that moving forward.
And of course, that makes perfect sense, especially when you're dealing with something that, you know, visually might be one thing happening, but what's really happening is something else. But just that said, if someone, if there's a pothole, if there's a major issue, I mean, this doesn't mean that these are the only roads that are going to get any attention, and you've always been right there to do those repairs as needed, and we will continue to do that, and we'll continue to do the best we can. But to know that it's based on what you were just saying is very important for all of us to know. Any other comments or questions? Do we have cards? No? Okay.
I just have one final statement. So the mayor and council are aware that the town received $2.9 million in CARES Act funding, and my recommendation would be, we're going to try to use that as stabilizer funding. We've already used $300,000 for the grant program you heard tonight. Probably by the end of December, we'll probably have $2.5 million. What I would suggest is we'll just kind of put that in a, you know, a reserve, see how we get through next year, because we have to see really some of these revenues that come through the town, our state shared revenue, and we'll see how that works. My recommendation is anything that's saved, we'll put it into the street fund. I think it's a great use of that money. It goes right back to the community, and we will maybe be able to tackle some of these local streets that are falling apart, like Richland and some other streets. The horse-name streets are all falling apart.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think this just points out, you know, it's a difficult situation when the pavement management plan recommended, what, $6 million a year for the next 10 years or whatever? And obviously, the pool of money is much, much smaller than that, so yeah, you have to pick and choose what you can and try to prioritize everything, which I think we've done. And I know arterials, like you said, are priority, and I think beyond this cycle, I mean, Palisades is pretty bad from Saguaro West, and, you know, we're going to do most of these downtown streets, and then it's just, you know, El Lago from Long Montana South is pretty bad too, so that's, I think that's an arterial as well. So again, there's, you know, hundreds of places in town that need repair, so just unfortunate, but we'll be dealing with it.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the First Amendment to Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, C2020-065-1, with M.R. Tanner, an amount of $2,650,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
Council discussion, any direction? Motion?
Motion, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.[1783.29][1783.29][applause]